All right, so it's 6:01, why don't we get started? So first, welcome everybody, I want to thank you for joining us this evening. It looks like we've got pretty much all of the board members and I see we've got a nice attendance from the public as well, so grateful for that and looking forward to a great discussion tonight. Today is March 2nd, 2002. This meeting is now in session and all proper notifications have been provided per the Open Public Meetings Act. What I'd like to do real quick is a quick roll call to see who we've got, so Diana, if you can do a quick roll call and then we'll do our customary salute to the flag.
Yes, Chairman Reina. Dr. Parker?
Yes, here.
Councilman Hearsby?
Here.
Mr. Sylvester?
Here.
Mr. Ski?
Here.
Mr. Go?
Here.
Mr. Toscano?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Councilwoman Quinn?
Here.
And Chairman Reina?
Here. All right, so with that, we'll move to the salute of the flag, as is customary. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome everybody, I am excited to have our conversation tonight. As is customary, we've got a couple of things on the agenda that we will run through. First and foremost, I'd like to welcome those out in the public forum that are joining us for today. As a reminder, we will hold this meeting as we traditionally have, we've got two applicants that are on the docket today. We've got BWB Holdings and we've got Diamond Chip Realty that we'll be discussing today, we'll start with BWB Holdings first. We will, I expect, based on the number of attendees that we've got currently, I know this will likely be a longer meeting, we will take last witness at 9:45 this evening. And if for some reason we are not complete, then obviously that will move to our next session. Just with regards to sort of the flow of this evening's events, for those that are not traditionally participating in this, we will go through, we will accept for each of the different applicants, we will accept testimony for each of them, we will go through that. We will then open this up to the public for commentary in addition to board member questions and feedback. So any questions or clarity with regards to this evening's events? All right, with that, why don't we start with minutes approval? Mike, would you like to kick us off?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 19, 2022 Planning Board Meeting, as recorded.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second, thank you Ted, thank you Michael. Next up is our Delmar Resolution?
Yeah, right.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to memorialize resolution of the Planning Board of the Township of Sparta approving the preliminary and final site plan, C variances and site plan exceptions, application of Delmar Woodport LLC relating to Block 2014, Lots 7 and 8, 200 Woodport Road and located in the C1 Zone District.
Great, thank you Mike, can I get a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Who was that, Pete or Ted?
Ted Dunn spoke up first, so Ted gets a second.
All right, thank you Ted.
Drew, can you, can you hear me Drew?
We can, hello Christine.
Okay, so John Kohler is in the lobby and John, if you could just raise your hand, then this way Mike knows to let you in.
Great, thanks Christine.
Sorry, I'm sorry for the interruption, but John wanted to get on, so.
No, no, thank you. All right, so with the minutes approval and with the Delmar Resolution, can we get a roll call, Diana?
Yes, Chairman Reina, Councilwoman Quinn?
Yes.
Councilman Hearsby? Councilman Hearsby?
I think you're muted Josh.
Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Mr. Toscano?
Yes.
Councilman Hearsby? And Chairman Reina?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Collins now. The BWB Holdings is not a full hearing, it's just a return to you of an explanation by Dave Simmons, your board attorney, of a field change that the applicant needed to make for the utility, electric utility meter and the electric utility transformer. So without, we don't, it's not a full public hearing, it's not even an amendment to the site plan, it's more following up on the site plan in the, from field work, so I think Dave Simmons could describe that to you quickly and if you had any questions, he could answer and also Jason Dunn is available, the applicant's planner, in case you have any questions for Jason.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, this is Dave Simmons. I just wanted to get back to the board. If you'll recall, the applicant, when they came in for their amended site plan to move the building back, they did show an area where they were going to put their electric meters and what have you to power the building in one of the bullnose islands in the parking lot and there was some concern on the board's part to make sure that it was buffered properly and wasn't necessarily visible from Main Street in Sparta. By the same token, the applicant did not want to put the electric meters on the front right corner of the building because they've got that nice building and they didn't want to have all the meters in view of the architectural work that they were installing on the building itself. So subsequent to the meeting of the board and its approval, we did have several back and forth discussions with Mr. Dunn, the applicant's planner, as well as the applicant's electrical contractor to come up with something that I believe would satisfy the board as far as buffering the electric metering equipment and various switchgear while at the same time not becoming ownersome to the applicant and the building owner as far as installing. And I believe Mr. Dunn provided a hard copy of the print entitled Proposed Screening Wall for Electric Utilities Prepared by Dykstra Associates, dated February 14th, 2022, it's one sheet. And basically what they did after the electrical contractor got involved, he was able to size out just how much camouflage wall, if you will, was going to be needed to buffer and screen the proposed meters and electrical gear. And they ended up providing enough to camouflage everything while at the same time minimizing the height and overall dimension. And the plan shows the configuration that they came up with was basically an L-shaped wall. I'm looking at the plans and it says facing the street, the section of the wall is seven feet long by six and a half feet high and the L-shaped piece facing the parking lot is five foot long and again, six and a half feet high. And if you look at the profile, they are building it with materials that will blend in with the overall buildings on the site. They are putting some screening on the top of the wall and they're also putting some plantings to buffer substantial part of both sides of the wall as well as in back. Looking at it from a power standpoint, they're bringing the power in from Main Street to this configuration and then they're in a good position where they put the bullnose and the screening that I just described to come into basically the right front corner of the proposed building. And the reason that's significant is apparently the way they have their building all designed, the right front hand corner of the building is where their utility room is. There was something in the resolution that perhaps going in the back by the HVAC units, but there was a problem there, as I understood it, with JCPN L not wanting to go back that far. Plus, if they went in that area, they'd have to bring all the power and utilities back to the front right corner again. So this seemed to be the best solution that everybody could come up with that provided screening, it provided adequate room to mount the meters and the switchgear without causing any unsightly equipment on the outside of the main building that they want to preserve the looks of. The other thing that this particular configuration comes up with is the fact that when they mentioned this at the last hearing, we weren't sure how far off the property line they were and subsequent to the meeting, Mr. Dunn put together the plan that showed they do not need a variance for what they're proposing. So this seemed to be the best, the best option for all worlds and all concerns, if you will. And I discussed this with Mr. Collins and we thought it best to run it by the board just so you could see what was going on to keep you abreast of everything.
Wonderful, thank you Dave. Mr. Dunn, anything to add?
No, thank you Chairman, that was a good summary, Mr. Simmons. We, as he said, we went back and forth on this a few different ways. The site plan itself has not changed, like the curb locations. We did have to move some landscaping around to make this work, but I think it's a good way to camouflage the utilities from, from view from the road and the majority of the site.
Great, thanks Jason. So with that, Tom, do we need to?
This one, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
No, this is just a, mostly we just wanted to tell the board of this field change that Dave is likely to approve or is probably going to approve, but if the board members had any problems or questions, we wanted the board to ask Dave and see, see if he could address them.
Great, thank you Tom. Diana, do you want to do a quick, a quick roll call of the, of the board members, see if there are any outstanding questions as it relates to BWB?
Yes, Chairman Reina and Councilwoman Quinn?
Good for my side.
Dr. Parker?
No questions.
Councilman Hearsby?
He's on the phone and somebody needs to let him in. So from the phone into the conference as a panelist.
Thank you.
This is Quinn, would you happen to know the last three digits of his number?
I will send them to you, yes, I'll post them, I'll send it. And also Kurt Morris joined as well and just while we're on this topic of letting people in while you're in the lobby, can you please also let Kurt Morris in as a panelist?
I'm actually having an issue letting him in, for some reason, it just keeps bouncing. I'll continue to try until he connects.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvester?
Yes, I just wanted to get further clarification, Mr. Simmons, based on a previous approval, is this a significant change or modification that was discussed and agreed upon or do, I understand your report says you're, you feel this was the most adequate use based on the field judgments and the professionals in reviewing it, but I just want to make sure this isn't a major change or conflict with what our original conditions or approval was.
I, I think what the situation was on the original approval, one of the things that the board had in there to investigate was the possibility if the meters could be put, call it the back left corner of the building where the HVAC units were and we did pursue that, but again, for the information that I was provided on the electric company not wanting to go back there and also having to bring all the power if the equipment was back there all the way to the back of the front building, it didn't work logistically very well for the owner of the building. So with that, we went back to locating it towards the area where you see it and it was a situation where as long as we didn't have a variance and we did work hard and came, Mr. Dunn came up with a couple iterations to avoid a variance. We're not exactly where the board was talking about, but I, I think it's the best that we can do and that addresses everybody's concerns.
Okay, thank you, no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ski?
No, I have no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kohler?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Go?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Toscano?
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy?
No questions.
Thank you, Chairman Reina?
No questions, Dave and Jason, thank you for collaborating together and coming up with something that is, that's equitable for all parties and helps address sort of the our initial concerns and discussions from the previous meeting, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you to the board for considering this, we really appreciate working with you this way.
Thank you. So if there are no other questions as it relates to BWB Holdings at this point, I would open it up to the public to see if there are any questions from the outside public, correct Tom?
No, on this one, for BWB Holdings, Mr. Chairman, there's no, is no hearing technically tonight, it's really just Dave reporting back to you on the field change that he's approving. So if the hearing, it was already over. It's a complying change, so we can turn now, if you want to, to Diamond Chip Realty LLC and and we can recognize the applicant's attorney, Mr. Steve Goan, but you, you've called the calendar.
Yeah, no, that, that sounds great Tom, I appreciate it. So yeah, let's move forward over to Diamond Chip Realty, if you'd like to swear them in and.
Sure, we also, so I think Mr. Goan is in the meeting. And I want to see if Mr. Larry Cohen, an attorney representing an interested party, is on the attendees and whether he could be let in by Mike Dempsey, so it's Larry Cohen, C-O-H-E-N. I didn't see him a few minutes, 15 minutes ago, but maybe he's there now. Larry, if you are on and can raise your hand, maybe your name isn't shown.
I don't see him at this time, oh, there's Nancy Cohen.
Just a reminder, you can only have one device connected to this meeting in a room at one time. If you have more than one device, please disconnect or mute the microphone and speaker.
Okay. So, Mr. Cohen, are you now able to speak?
He has been let in as a panelist.
Here I am.
Larry?
Can you hear me?
Hi Larry, you, you hear us?
Yes.
I think I heard your voice, there you are.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much.
Larry, we're recognizing, just recognizing the applicant and obviously we'll recognize you in turn. Case has been called and Mr. Goan, Goan is, is going to speak, but before we go any further, I just want to ask if there's anyone in the audience who is an attorney representing someone himself or another person, please raise your hand, this is just for attorneys now, raise your hand and let our, our computer expert see your raised hand and tell me your name and we will let in attorneys who are appearing for anyone, including themselves.
Mr. Collins, I did allow one individual in. His name disappeared before I had a chance to write it down.
Okay, so ma'am or sir who has been admitted, raise their hand, please state your name and if you're an attorney.
Tom, good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, this is Anand Dash, I'm a partner at the law firm of Kennedy's, I'm at the moment an attorney and resident of Sparta Township and participating in that capacity as a lawyer as well.
Okay, thank you Mr. Dash. Thank you. So please go ahead, Mr. Goan.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi everyone, Steve Goan, from the law firm Giordano Halloran and Cisla. I'm a partner in our real estate group and I am here tonight representing Diamond Chip Realty LLC, the applicant in this matter. The property that we are talking about tonight is 33 Demarest Road, that's located at the corner of Limecrest Road and Demarest Road in Sparta. It's also known as Lot 23 in Block 12008. Many of the board members may be familiar with this property, it's improved with the diamond sand and gravel facility and the Sparta ready mix facility. That's a combination of a concrete manufacturing plant and a sand and gravel production facility. So what we are here tonight to present is an application for preliminary site plan approval. And I want to stress both for the board and for the members of the public that are here that we are seeking only preliminary site plan approval tonight. So we've prepared a plan that we feel is, is fairly detailed. There were a number of questions raised by the board's professionals in advance of this hearing. We're hope, hopefully we're going to answer all of those questions tonight. But at the end of this process, we're going to be asking for a vote from the board only for preliminary site plan approval. And what that means is that we'll be required after this to comply with any conditions that the board comes up with. We'll have to go and seek outside agency approvals from NJDEP and the county and others. And then we'll come back to this board after satisfying all of those conditions for final site plan approval. So this will not be the board's last shot at us. And then as a matter of fact, because of the nature of this application, there will be a third board review and that will be ultimately when we have a tenant for the project that we are proposing. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that this is just the first step in the process and that we are only asking for preliminary site plan approval tonight. The proposal that we have is to redevelop the diamond, diamond sand and gravel facility with a warehouse facility. So the application that we've prepared tonight is fully conforming, there are no variances. The application meets all the applicable zoning and development requirements of the township's ED zoning ordinance. As the planning board may know, the ED zone was amended about a year ago to permit this type of project and what we have endeavored to do here with the plan that you're going to see tonight is present an application that is fully conforming. There was, I do know for, for everybody's benefit, there was one variance that was identified by the board's professionals prior to this meeting that had to do with a monument sign. We, we had requested two monument signs where only one is permitted and we are, I'll represent that we are withdrawing that request. So we're only going to be asking for the one monument sign and that, that eliminates the one bulk variance that was identified. So with respect to this application, there are no variances, bulk or otherwise. There is one design waiver that has to do with a retaining wall that our engineer is going to discuss with you. And at the outset, I would like to let the board know that we did have an opportunity to obtain review letters from your professionals, we received a letter from Dave Simmons dated February 9th, 2022 and we received a letter from Catherine Sarmad dated February 24th, 2022. And we will fully comply with those review letters. So in the event the board grants preliminary site plan approval with this application, what that means is that we would have to make any plan revisions requested by the board's professionals in those review letters, comply with any recommendations in those review letters and that would be a condition of our preliminary site plan approval. To take you through the application tonight, I have a number of witnesses. We're going to start with Tony Diggan, he's our civil engineer. I have Richard Saunderson, who is our project architect. Jim Ford is a representative of the applicant and the applicant's development consultant. We have Adam Gibson, who is our traffic engineer and we have Mike Green, who is our environmental consultant. So I understand that there's a lot of public interest here and you know, I would like to say at the outset that what we are here to do tonight is to not only present this application, but also answer the board's questions and any questions that the public may have. So what I'd like to do first at this point is call up Mr. Diggan to start our testimony, so Tony?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Goan. Before we get started with the public hearing, I just want to see if there are any objections from the two attorneys to jurisdictional issues. So Mr. Cohen or Mr. Dash, do you want to address the board and me on any jurisdictional issues?
All right, Mr. Collins, I've reviewed the notices pursuant to NJSA 40,55D-12, I find the the legal notices have been complied with pursuant to the 200-foot notice list. And so I have no per se objection on jurisdiction at this time.
Thank you Dash and Mr. Cohen?
Yes, I, similarly, I don't have a question with reference to jurisdiction as to whether or not the applicant has met the notice requirements. There may be an issue that arises subsequently as to whether or not there has to be any application to the Board of Adjustment with reference to this application. But that remains to be seen after testimony. Other than that, there, there's, that technically is not a jurisdiction, but a more of a venue issue as to what board, because I know that Sparta has two separate boards, thank you.
Thank you gentlemen, and please, we'll go ahead now, Mr. Goan and I'll swear in, Mr. Diggins. Sir, witness, please raise your right hand. Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God? Thank you, Mr. Diggins, and please state your name, spell your last name and give us at least a business address.
Sure, Tony Diggan, D-I-G-G-A-N. Business, business address is 92 Carnegie Center Boulevard, Princeton, New Jersey, 08540 and I work for Kinley Horn and Associates.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins, and the board has not, I don't believe the board has seen you before, so if you and your attorney would go over your qualifications, we, we would appreciate that.
Sure. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is in good standing and is active, a bachelor of science in environmental engineering. Been involved in practice of civil engineering and land development for over 23 years. I oversee land development services in New Jersey for Kinley Horn. Appeared before newer sports, redevelopment boards, county boards, for DEP, for Meadowlands. Appeared formally before Sparta, but then I've appeared before Mahala, Princeton, West Windsor, East Windsor, Arnie's Point.
And your license, and your license is in good standing in the state of New Jersey currently?
Yes, sir.
So I would ask that the board accept Mr. Diggins' qualifications as a professional engineer.
Thank you gentlemen, I don't have any questions for qualifications, but we'll open it to blood deer only to Mr. Cohen and Mr. Dash, just to qualifications.
This is Lawrence Cohen, I have no questions.
Yeah, I, I, I do not either, as to qualifications.
Thank you gentlemen, and please go ahead, Steve and Tony.
Sure, so first I'm going to, Tom, we have an exhibit that I'm going to pull up, so I'm going to share my screen and we'll mark this, I guess, as A1.
Very good, and just identify, have Mr. Diggins identify what it is and.
Diana, could you just let me, could you enable screen sharing so I can share?
You, you were, you were able to share your screen now, sir.
Sorry. Okay, so Tony, first off, can you just identify what we're seeing with this exhibit?
Sure, this is Marcus Exhibit A1, this is an aerial exhibit of existing conditions, prepared by my firm, Kinley Horn, dated February 20. dated February twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two, to two-hundred-scale drawing and north is plan up, if you will. And so first of all, do is describe the existing site conditions. And then after that, we'll move on to proposed site conditions. So again, this is an area of existing site conditions and. Okay. The project site, which is bounded in the yellow double dashed line there, is located at thirty-three Demarest Road, Sparta Township Sussex County, New Jersey. Its current use is industrial manufacturing. It houses the Sparta ready mix, which includes a cement manufacturing plant and a sand wash operation where materials imported and processed on site. The project parcel is known as Block twelve-thousand-eight, lot twenty-three. It's approximately sixty-eight point oh-four acres. Site is in the economic development zone where warehouse, storage, and distribution is permitted use. To the north, the project's bounded by commercial light industrial uses along Gale Court into the west and southwest, commercial light industrial uses. And on the southeast, bordered by the New York Susquehanna Western Railway. And across the railway, there's an NJDOT property with non-residential uses also in the ED zone. To the east, the parcel is bounded by a vacant and undeveloped parcel in the PCD zone, the plan commercial development zone. Presently, access on the site is handled via split driveway off of Demarest Road about a hundred and fifty feet north of the railway. This point of access is used by employees, cement trucks, trucks hauling materials for the sand wash business. The site along the southern boundary has about, has a twelve-hundred linear foot of existing rail siding, which provides existing, provides access to the New York Susquehanna and Western Railroad. The soils on the site are fifty percent of the soils on the site are listed as sand gravel, which contain no HSG soil classification, and the remaining soils are type A soils. Presently, thirty acres of the site are existing motor vehicle surface based in operations. And motor vehicle service is defined as any pervious or impervious surface which is intended to be used by vehicles and is subject to precipitation. Our office prepared an exhibit of this area, which is included in the stormwater management report, provided both to Sparta Township and NJDP as part of our permitting. The site generally drains from the northeast to the southwest to a culvert located under the railway. And beyond that, to a wetland mitigation project completed by NJDOT as part of the Route fifteen overpass, which was constructed to place Route fifteen over the railway up by a house's corner road. There are several man-made settling ponds and ditches that were constructed to support the site's sand wash operation. These features are either classified as man-made ditches or isolated wetlands. There are mapped wetlands along the southern parcel line, parcel boundary. And there are also wetlands along the eastern parcel boundary and a portion of that wetlands is under a conservation. There are no regulated drainage features. Let me back up a second. These features are documented in the NJDEP freshwater wetlands letter of interpretation, which has been extended and is valid through May tenth, twenty-twenty-five. There are no regulated drainage features on site. However, there is a regulated feature with no better bank located across the railway on NJDOT parcel. This feature ultimately discharges under Demarest Road, but the feature does not flow under normal conditions. Our firm has submitted an FHA line verification application with NJDEP to establish the ripperium buffers and the regulated flood hazard area. Any questions on existing conditions?
Why don't you try to go all the way through without interruption and Tony or Mr. Diggins? And that way, we can keep it orderly, and that's what the board prefers for the presentation of the with witnesses, your presentation and also other witnesses for the applicant first. So please keep going.
Great. Do you think I can get a minute to share my screen? Because you got those in there pretty.
Yeah, is it, would it be possible to make Tony a presenter also and allow him to share his screen?
If I mute?
Mike Dempsey, can they both?
Who would you like to be able to share their screen?
Tony Diggan.
Only one of you can share at a time.
I'm going to stop. I'm going to stop my share.
Okay, you can stop your share or I could stop it for you.
Tony's going to pull up another exhibit.
Okay, he should be able to share his screen now. Just please make sure the microphone and speaker turned off on that computer.
Sure. I'm just going to use this. I think we're good now. Okay, Tony, so this is, this is going to be exhibit number two, which will mark as A-two.
Yeah, this is Exhibit A-two, which is identical to the sheet C-four-hundred, including our preliminary site plan application. The date on this one is twenty-two, or February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two. It is an eighty-scale plan and plan is plan north, actually, north is plan northeast, if you will, in this direction.
Thank you, gentlemen. That'll be A-two, I think. Is that right, Steve?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Tony, so why don't you just, let's take them through. This is, this is proposed condition. So why don't you talk to them about what we're proposing here with this application?
Yep. So the applicant proposes to cease the Sparta ready mix operations to construct two modern rail server warehouse buildings totaling eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand four-hundred-and-eighty square feet. Proposed building A on the eastern side of the property is three-hundred-seventy-three-thousand-six-hundred square feet with two five-thousand square foot office blocks. And this top northwest corner and another five-thousand square foot block down here in this southwest corner. Building B is located on the western portion of the property is five-hundred-and-eight-thousand-eight-hundred square feet. And again, this also has two five-thousand square foot office blocks, one in the northeast corner of building B and one in the southwest corner. Building A will have a boxcar loading dock. Well, it's eastern facade with a canopy. They'll have a new rail siding that's going to extend eight-hundred feet from the existing rail siding along the east side, and then it'll have eight-hundred-and-fifty feet of boxcar loading dock. Building B, access to the rail is via four ramps that connect building A directly from the boxcar loading down the ramp through a strikeout accessway through the truck port and into the ramp on the western side of building B. From a circulation standpoint, truck traffic access to site via two driveways, one in the northwest corner here and another driveway in this southwest corner. The idea is, the design intent is that trucks will be able to circulate the loading dock areas in a counterclockwise direction. So they have their eye on the same side of the dock. Passenger cars will access the site to the same two driveways and will circulate to one of four parking fields located along the end caps of the two buildings here, here, and these two areas. Emergency access is provided around the entirety of the industrial park through the normal circulation drives. And then there is a emergency access that comes off this southeastern parking field at the southern corner of building A. Proceeds east, and then there's an accurate rail crossing here with the rail siding. And then that proceeds back north along that boxcar loading dock and ultimately reconnects with a, the parking field in the north. Now, that road, that emergency access is intended to be pervious, to be grass pavers or an interlocking technology to support the fire truck. From a parking standpoint, there are one-hundred-and-ninety-one total docks on the site, sixty-seven on the east side. Sorry, sixty-seven on building A on that west side. And there are hundred-and-twenty-four total on building B. There are fifty trailer park spaces over on the west side of building B, which are sized twelve by fifty-five. And from employee parking standpoint, we received some feedback on that. At the present, we're showing three-hundred-and-six spaces. And we're land banking a hundred-and-nineteen in this area here. I think it's important to point out that the land bank spaces, as well as the emergency access, or sorry, the canopy, the boxcar loading canopy on the east side of the building, as well as the railroad bousiers, are all included in the pervious cover count. The reason we're asking for three-hundred stalls is because the parking ratios we're seeing now, the tenant are varying somewhere between one to twenty-five-hundred, which is about three-hundred-and-fifty stalls, down to, or up to, rather, one for two-thousand square feet of warehouse, which would be about four-hundred-and-forty stalls. And so to maintain flexibility on potential tenants, we chose to land back the hundred-and-nineteen stalls on that western side. There's also a newer DCA reg that requires a percentage of the stalls be EV make-ready. In our case, they did the ones that were built, so three-hundred-and-six stalls at four percent of the requirement would yield approximately twelve stalls would be EV-ready. And I believe a small portion of them would also have to be ADA. From a box standpoint, as Mr. Goen pointed out, the application's fully conforming with the ED ordinance. All the block requirements, including the front, rear, and side yard building and parking setbacks. From a maximum, from a maximum previous coverage standpoint, sixty-five percent is permitted. We're at fifty-four percent. Maximum building height is fifty-six feet and building A is approximately fifteen-and-a-half feet, and building B is forty-nine feet. So we're under that maximum height. From building coverage standpoint, forty-five percent is permitted. We're at twenty-nine-point-seven percent. And the maximum parking coverage is forty-five percent as well. We're at twenty-four-point-three percent. Again, that does include the bank parking and the bousiers on the rail siding. From a stormwater management standpoint, the stormwater management will again comply with requirements of NJAC seven-colon-eight. And both the township of Sparta and NJDEP will be performing a stormwater review. We, the stormwater basically connected, collected, rather, in stormwater conveyance system, starting up here in the end, the end cap parking. And it's routed to these larger infiltration basins in the south. Point out again that based on the reduction in motor vehicle surface, we are not required to do infiltration from water quality standpoint. But we will be doing recharge via cisterns in the truck port areas in these areas here. And overflow from those, those BMPs will be sent on downstream to the infiltration basins to the south. From a utility standpoint, gas service we provided via an extension south of Demarest Road. And electric is, will be provided from the existing utility infrastructure along Demarest Road. And water services is from a, from the main in Demarest Road, from Sparta Water. And our office has been in contact with them, the water infrastructure design requirements. The project will be serviced via the Unlot Wastewater Treatment System, which we have an approval for. Lighting is primarily, the lighting is wall-mounted, but the lighting will conform with all ordinance requirements. All fixtures will be LED, dark sky compliant, full cutoff fixtures. And the one thing to point out is that the boxcar loading canopy will have undermount lighting to light that area. Again, the lighting's compliant with the ordinance, including the light spill at the property lounge, which is less than a half-foot candle. Landscape is in compliance with the design standards, working with the township engineer on one of the buffer requirements and work with him to comply with that. We have permitting with NJDEP freshwater wetlands, the man-made features, signing basins, and the ditches will require general permits to fill those. And the conservation even area will remain untouched. We also are getting a flood hazard area individual permit. And at the bottom of the site here, adjacent to the basins, there's a compensatory flood storage area. So all these areas, which are presently used as part of the Sparta ready mix operation, these areas here will be turned back to grass and retention basins. And that's all I have for proposed condition. Are any questions?
Yes, Tom, I think, I think that's probably all we have from Mr. Diggan in terms of the proposal. So we can open it up to the board, board's professionals, however you want to do this.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, would you like the applicant to present all of their witnesses and then open it up to questions or what's your preference?
Let's take them one at a time, Tom. Let's address the civil engineering piece of this for now, and then we'll move on, I think, to the next.
Okay, so Diana, maybe call the role, well, let's see if Dave Simmons or Diana, I'm sorry, or Catherine have any comment that, based on the testimony so far? That beyond, they already did their, they have their written reports, which are part of the record. They don't have to summarize that right now, but any sort of comments or questions that they have that they would like highlighted now?
This is Dave Simmons, again, referring to the February ninth, twenty-twenty-two report. Probably one of the biggest areas of information that we've gone over with the applicant's engineer dealt with stormwater management. There is some additional work that I know they're doing in order to address some piping inverts and what have you that the township engineer's office identified. We had called out some piping that had to be checked because we found it couldn't handle the specific storm. So we didn't go any further and analyze any of the rest of the pipes. But having said that, I know, based on our conversations with the applicant's engineer, they're going to provide some additional grading contours and some additional information. and some additional informations that we've discussed uh to further clarify the stormwater management to show that they uh they in fact comply. Uh, again, they identified that they were going to eliminate that one monument sign, which eliminated a variance. And all the other details, my understanding is that they're willing uh and able to comply with, so we'll review it at a later time based on that.
Great, thank you, Dave. Catherine, anything from your from your side?
I I just had one minor question or clarification um from my February twenty-fourth memo. Um, I I I'm not sure it was such one, but there was, I just made a comment that the the number of dock doors um in total between the two buildings, I think was miscalculated on the plans and what the the site plan that was brought up as an exhibit um or the colorized plan um still showed the hundred and twenty-four doctors, where I think I calculated um one hundred and eighteen, I believe. Um, and the miscalculation came off the building uh A, I believe, the the left building in that plan, so um I don't know if that was if that was caught or if I was if I miscalculated it.
I'll I'll let Tony answer that.
Yeah, we'll we'll check into that and uh revise it and have it resubmitted.
Thank you. That's all I have.
And Mr. Chairman, I did want to just check with Mr. Digan and Mr. DeGoein. There was a a notation on, I believe, the architect's drawing or something that said manufacturing, which I don't believe you're proposing manufacturing, but if you could clarify that 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 you're not or confirm what you are. And I the way you described it is warehouse, so just confirm that note will be corrected, I guess.
Sure, we can, we can, uh, we can confirm that. Yeah, the the proposal is um for a warehouse use. Uh, I think the architectural plans that we submitted inadvertently had had note noted that it would be a manufacturing use, but that's just, that was just a typo. Um, so it it will be a warehouse use. Um, and I believe our architectural plans have already been revised to fix that note. Uh, and we will provide uh Tom some operational testimony, so everybody will get a a clear picture of exactly how this is going to operate.
Thank you.
Okay, so uh.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Goen.
Want to do, do you want to do board member questions of this witness now?
Yeah, I would like to, uh, I would like to do that before we we move directly into that, just uh I'm kind of monitoring the Q and A and I just wanted to alert the audience. Because I know we've got a a large number of folks in attendance for this. So we are, the process for this this hearing, uh, very similar to any other hearing that we would do, is we will go through all of the testimony from the witnesses. Uh, we will have an opportunity for each of our uh our town SMEs to respond. The board members will ask questions. The audience will have an opportunity to ask all questions, any and all questions that they've got. Um, we're going to do that on the on the tail end once all of the testimony has been given. Um, so I just wanted to share that because I see a couple of questions out there. Uh, and I know some of those sections do incorporate witness and testimony that will be coming up, like traffic studies and things like that. Uh, so with that, I guess, Diana, if we can do a quick roll call, let's um, let's just run down um the list, maybe starting with Joe. Um, with regards to any questions and we'll we'll get questions addressed from any of the board members directly.
Yeah, Jim and Vayna. I'm sorry, did you say first, Mr. Tuskina?
Uh, yeah, that's fine. Sorry, Joe, let's put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. Wouldn't be the first time. So, uh, good evening, guys. Um, a couple of comments and and I'm sure as the evening progresses, you know, based on the size and scope of this project, especially for this community, uh, there's going to be quite a few questions, right? And I appreciate the fact that we can address these, you know, one step at a time. Um, even though I'm a planning board member, I've had the opportunity to look at some of the documentation, but what's good about this evening is having some of the color based on the testimony being presented, right? Um, it puts some things into perspective as to what's looking to be accomplished. And even though I know this is conforming and there's no variances being seen and you're looking just for a preliminary site plan approval. Um, you know, it also will take some time and I'll speak for myself here to fully understand everything that's going to be presented tonight. Um, a suggestion or a a question I would have to the planning board and its attorney is I don't know if it may be premature making a decision this evening on approving this without first being able to hear the information, digesting the information, the size and scope of this project is significant. And I'm sure based on the public interest this evening, there's going to be a lot of people too that are seeing it for the first time that are going to have some additional questions as well, so.
It it will be. Yeah, and Joe, let me address that for you head on. Um, yeah, I mean, the expectation is, I mean, in order for us to adequately get through all of the witnesses, um, ensure that, you know, all of the public has an opportunity to to ask questions and kind of address this again, given the scale and scope of the project. Um, I I there's no way, I personally anticipate we're going to complete this in one night. Um, I suspect this will go on again, kind of based on how the evening goes, but um, yeah, I would fully expect for this to 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 go into our our next meeting.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I appreciate that. You know what? Again, just based on the size and scope of the project, I just want to make sure that it's fair to everyone that's involved in the process. And uh, I very much appreciate those comments. One quick question I have before we move on to the next individual. I know that you guys were looking to come back for a third meeting in regards to possible tenants. Do you have any ideas who those individuals may be at this time? Or is that completely an unknown factor at this point?
Well, I can, I can address that briefly. We do have uh Jim Ford coming up, who's going to talk a little bit about the type of tenant that we're going to be looking for with this project. Um, so he'll provide that testimony basically directly, but you know, realistically, um that's a decision that more than likely would be made prior to or right around the time of final site plan approval, rather than at the time of preliminary. Um, that's the time when you'd start to design a building and fit it out for a particular tenant use, but I'll let Mr. Ford get into that when he comes in. And actually, as a matter of fact, on that note, if um, if somebody could promote Jim Ford, um, he's in the audience somewhere.
He's he's been, he's been promoted. It'll take a couple of minutes, a couple of seconds from the join.
Thanks a lot.
No, thank you. I appreciate that answer. Um, and it sheds some light in regards to the process, so much appreciate it. Um, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have at the moment.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Um, Diana, you want to move us to the next panelist on the list?
Yes, uh, Councilwoman Quinn, Councilwoman Quinn.
Hi, um, a couple of questions. So I want to just go back to the question with regard to tenants. So it's my understanding that even at the at the time, um, any tenants also would have to come back through this process to be approved. So the the tenants that are coming in through in the future would also have to come back through the planning board, just like any other applicant, correct?
And and uh, Mr. Collins, I can, I'll take that as well. So, yes, so when the uh township committee amended um, the ED zoning ordinance, part of that amended ED zoning ordinance is a requirement that even after uh we as the property owner, the developer um obtains preliminary and final site plan approval. Um, even after that process, once there is a identified tenant, um, the ED ordinance requires that prior to the issuance of a CO to that tenant, that tenant has to come back to the planning board for a review. And essentially, the planning board gets to confirm that that tenant will meet all of the requirements of the ED zoning ordinance and the rest of the township zoning ordinance. Um, so it's it's essentially, you know, a a it it's even an enhanced certificate of occupancy type review, just to make sure that the tenant is actually going to comply with whatever zoning ordinance requirements there are.
Excellent. So I I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that. And also, I want to make sure that um I have a clear understanding of the footprint that we just went over, and I understand that we we still need the piece of exactly how this operation runs, what this actually is, but in just looking at the the footprint of the site right now, to make sure that I am clear, the footprint of this site, based on the map that you shared with us tonight, this is an existing um, you know, in in the in the in an existing industrial zone, it is currently being mined and operated for two businesses, sand and gravel, and also for cement, for for uh Sparta Ready Mix, rather, correct? So it it currently has two things going on on it right now. And in looking at the blueprint of what you showed us, this uh, these warehouses do not um encroach or go outside of the existing blueprint of what's there right, I mean, as far as property lines of what is there right now, correct?
Uh, yeah, that is correct. Well, just one clarification to what you said. So the the property is not being mined. Um, it's not like there's a re- there's no resource extraction operation going on there, but there is a sand and gravel production facility, a concrete production facility. Um, but but you, but the rest of what you said is correct. What we're proposing is not going essentially outside of the limits of disturbance of of what's there currently.
Okay, so I just want to make sure for my own clarification. Okay. And and just to clarify also what you had said, the design is not to keep those operations and add to it, is to close those operations, seal that property. And then, so this is not in addition to what's there right now. This is, this is not in addition to what's there, right? This is, everything that's there now is going to be closed. And then this new stuff is the the new addition in the new warehouses and whatnot that you're proposing would be on the same blueprint or the same footprint.
Co- correct.
Okay, and with regard to what's coming off the rails, you outlined that there's going to be a spur of roughly, I believe, eight hundred and fifty feet that brings uh product off the rail to the first building, and then it comes through a a a bridge into the second building. Did I understand that correctly?
I'm I'm going to let Mr. Digan take that one.
Yeah, so.
I'm just trying to clarify that I understood it properly.
Good. So there's going to be an eight hundred foot extension off of the um existing rail siding. It'll extend north, that eight hundred feet I was talking about. And then there'll be an approximately eight hundred and fifty foot of a boxcar loading dock on the backside of building A. The interconnectivity between building A and B is achieved via uh four load outdoors with ramps. And those uh ramps connect to an accessway, an accurate accessway, basically a striped out section through the truckport um that goes to the um opposite loading ramp on building B. So they would take, the uh railcar would pull up to the boxcar loading dock. Um, they would unload uh via uh forklift, spin around on the dock, and they go directly out, building A, down the dock, across the truckport in the building B.
Yes, I, uh, so Ms. Quinn, I think your question basically was, is the is the railway going to connect between the buildings? The railway is going to go behind one of the buildings, correct, Tony?
Correct.
And but the and the buildings are going to be connected via by another means.
Right, right. So I I didn't think the rail connected through, but I just want to make sure I understand the process. And again, I think a lot of this will become more clear as we have a better understanding of of what, you know, how this is going to operate. So those are the questions that I have right now. And and just to clarify again, that this is going to remain on the existing blueprint or footprint of the property. It does not encroach over into the neighboring property, which is the property across the street right now from North Village. So this is clearly going to stay in the confines, what you're proposing of where it is right now.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Parker. Dr. Parker. Councilman Harris.
Um, yes, you know, I think the blueprints speak for themselves and I and I I know they clarified some of the procedural stuff. Um, so I'm good right now. I'll have some more questions when we get into some of the other stuff later.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestre.
Yes, I have a few questions. I'll try to be brief. Will there be environmental testimony tonight from any of the professionals?
Yeah, we do have an environmental consultant here. He's going to testify uh last after we go through architecture, uh, operations, traffic.
Okay, so I'll hold off on that one. And just a a few quick questions. When transferring ownership, the um, did any of the uses, current uses or prior uses trigger the Industrial Site Recovery Act or go through any DEP clearance in regards to that?
Uh, yeah, the answer is yes to that. So so we're going to have, that's something where we're going to have to address when we redevelop the site.
Okay. And as of now, I think uh you you touched upon it, there is the 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 current ownership or has not have, has not accepted any letters of intent from any current tenants. Um, just to get that on on the record or clarify, I wasn't clear on uh, the timing of that. So was just wanting to know if you actually have letters of intent from uh future tenant uses.
Uh, not at this time, no.
All right. All right, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ski.
Um, he had gotten kicked out. He sent me a message asking to be let back in. He got back in, but uh he needed to uh to get unmuted.
He's been promoted to panelists, so he should be able to respond. Yeah, I got it. I'm I'm sorry, I got disconnected there. Um, no, uh, between Joe and Chris and Christine, I I most of my questions were pretty much answered. Um, so I'm I'm okay as of now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parker.
Yes, I have a question. I'm not sure if it's to the uh the engineer or the environmental people. But does anybody know how high or where the depth is to the aquifer? How much soil do you have between this project and the aquifer? In depth? And if you don't know the answer, you can get, do what you have to do and come back on the next visit with the answer.
Yeah, for I I I think uh Mr. Parker or Dr. Parker, sorry, um, not for this witness, but we'll get you that answer and and we'll provide it. If we, you know, by the end of the, by the end of the night tonight, or we may have to provide it when we come back.
All right, thank you. I will continue with the other people and thank you.
Sure.
No further questions at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Mr. Kohler.
Hello, um, just one thing for the public that's online. You can download all the documents on the traffic studies. I saw at least six requests for the traffic study. Go to the town website. It's there under a calendar. Um, that being said, I just want to make sure I understand the testimony we've heard so far is the civil engineer, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, um, the crossing from building one to the to building two, is that going to be used for mostly forklifts moving stuff between the buildings or?
I'd say primarily forklifts, yeah.
Okay, and that they're going to have a ramp down and a ramp up, so it's not going to be a raised section?
No, it'll, yeah, you'll come down a likely a five to eight percent ramp down to the uh truckport grade of four feet down. Uh, proceed across the truckport in that striped out area, then go back up the other ramp. In the building B.
No further questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Go.
Yeah, um, I don't have drawings available. But one of the things I was looking at was towards the northwest, northwest, you know, uh, southwest corner of the property is a large rock outcropping. How are you going to prepare the property with that large uh rock outcropping?
Along the Demerus Road and the railway or?
This. I drove through the property when I I I appeared to see a very large rock outcropping that will probably be in the way and will have to be removed before you can.
It 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 could very well be an inventory pile.
So what, Tony, in again, I guess there's no rock formation back there or anything that impedes on the property that would cause, I I think what Mr. Go may be getting at is i- is there any material rock that required dynamite explosions, anything else like that as it relates to removal or or things of that nature?
No, so so we're not aware of any any uh rock outcropping like that. I mean, the the uh site was mined in in the past. Uh, there is an ongoing sand washing operation. Just suffice it to say, any sort of uh material uh that's encountered will be likely reused in in the uh construction of the site. But uh, as of now, I'm not aware of any uh rock outcropping.
Okay, to me, it looked like there was one, though, in the uh south, near the southwest corner of the property. And and also. And and also um, the uh west entrance to the property. I would like to see the building shortened by about the width of the office space to accommodate snow removal in in the in the west area. I'd like to see the uh entrance road come straight in rather than bearing to the left. To give you more more space up there because I believe it's it's quite steep.
So we'll we'll take that under advisement. Thank you for that. Uh, I believe that that uh roadway in there is about five percent. That's something. Welcome. Thank you.
That's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy.
Uh, no questions at this time.
Thank you. I'm Jim Marina.
Thanks, Diana. Uh, just a couple of clarifying points. So in terms of the height of the building that you're proposing, I know the ordinance calls for, I think you said fifty-six feet, correct?
Correct.
So it's roughly roughly two and a half stories. I just want to confirm that. Um, you know, you're looking at roughly two and a half stories.
Yeah, it's two and a half stories or or fifty-six feet.
Okay, great. Um, and can you describe a little bit further for me? You when we when you were sort of presenting, you talked about the uh the outside component that would go around the far side of the building, uh, connect to the other parking lot. I think when we were talking about the impervious coverage and everything, you shared that that would be more of a it sounded like gravel or anything, or is that going to be a paved component? Uh, when you come to the, I I guess, be the right side of the facility past the, you know, the rail and the canopy and everything in order to access that back, that backs parking lot?
Can we um, can we let uh Tony share his screen again?
Yeah.
He has the ability to share now.
Okay, so, yeah, right about where you are now, Tony, that that spur that runs along the backside past the canopy, the eight hundred and fifty feet. But i- is that concrete? And what's the width of that? Again, just thinking from an emergency perspective?
So the width of that's uh, yeah, it's intended to be emergency uh access, low volume. Uh, the width is twenty feet. Um, the only real use would be emergency access vehicles. Um, if that were necessary, uh, it would likely be either an interlocking, uh, plastic uh paver that they fill with gravel, or it could go the grass route. Just my experience, the the interlocking uh grass pavers, the grass usually dies anyway. Uh, so it'll likely be gravel, uh, so it would be pervious. Um, like, you know, you're like an NDS manufacturer type thing.
Okay. And you're estimating, just based on the the size and scope of the parking lot, I know you're doing the bit, you know, you're you're effectively using the calculations um that are recommended. What is the anticipated number of employees? For an operation like this, again, understanding it's going to vary depending on the tenants that you have there and and what the actual products are?
So the the, you know, with modern warehouse housing, it's highly specific on what the um, what's being stored, what the operation's like. Uh, you know, that could vary from a hundred employees up all up to, say, four hundred and fifty employees. I I know that doesn't answer the question specifically. It's it's highly tenant driven, even to the the number of of spaces they require then uh for trailers as well. Uh, so that may be something that uh Mr. Ford can answer uh later on in his direct.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll have, uh, we'll ask Mr. Ford to elaborate on that a little bit for you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think the only other question I had, I think uh most of them have been addressed on the civil engineering component. Uh, can you just describe for for us in the audience a little bit this spur um down here on the bottom right hand corner? Obviously, that's crossing over. Did you indicate that there would be a signal um where the rail crossing comes in?
Yeah, so uh, given the the low volume nature of the emergency access, it likely would not be signalized. Um, there could be uh stop bars for the emergency access vehicle. The um rail itself basically the 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 boxcar loading uh dock could hold approximately sixteen cars. So you're talking very low volume, very slow moving. Um, so it's not like you're on ma- on the uh main rail at thirty-five, forty, forty-five mile an hour operating speed. This would be anticipated to operate, you know, fifteen, twenty mile an hour would probably be higher than what what's actually going to occur out there.
Okay. All right.
And it's it's also at grade. Um, you will have um, you will have decent sightlines along there. Um, so don't anticipate the stopping sight distance is going to be an issue.
Perfect. That was going to be one of my other questions. All right, I think from a a civil engineering perspective, anyway, um, I'm uh, no more questions from my end. So, Tom, do do we want to move to the next witness?
If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, before we do, I just wanted to ask if um Mr. Parker could, Mr. Mr. Parker could just clarify his comment so we make sure we get the right answer to his question. Um, he was talking about the depth of the aquifer. Can, Mr. Parker, can you just clarify? Um, or maybe I'll I'll ask Tony to ask you to clarify so he knows what you're talking about.
Sure. Uh, you're talking about the uh aquifer, uh, for example, like a well water aquifer? What would? You're not referring to the groundwater. You're talking about the the deep aquifer that's used for drinking supply?
Yeah, if if I may, I think I could jump in. I think the the board would like to know the depth of groundwater and 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 the depth to drinking water uh supplied uh uh deep aquifer and the interconnection to to surface and shallow groundwater to deep, if you guys did hydro uh hydrogeologic study. And that's why I was waiting to hold off on the environmental.
Right to that. We'll uh get the answer.
Okay, yeah, so so we're gonna have that answer for you. Not at this moment, but we'll get that answer for you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, before we move on to the next witness, I have a few questions for Mr. Uh, Mr. Dig- Mr. Diggan.
And and by the way, I also have questions. I presume you're opening it up to the public for questions at this point. I'm just asking the chairman if that's going to be the procedure at this point for this witness.
So Drew, would you, what would you prefer? Do you want to get through the direct and the board questions of these witnesses and then open to the uh questions from the attorneys and public and testimony from the public? Or do you want to do one witness at a time?
Um, I am happy to open it up to, well, I I guess, given the volume of 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 folks that we have online here, I guess my concern, I I would like to keep the the questions directed to the applicable witness and the testimony that we've got here. Uh, so my concern would be is if we open it up broadly, uh, we're gonna have a hundred and ninety questions that may not be directly applicable to the individual witness and testimony. So my preference would be to actually go through the testimony. Make sure if there are, if there are any questions that are have not been addressed, then we open it up to the public for any additional questions or or anything that they would need clarification on.
So do you want the attorneys to ask questions now of this witness or do you want?
I would say i- if you'd like to have the attorneys ask questions, I'm fine to do that. Um, I would ask that, you know, we hold the remaining questions um till the till the end of the testimonies.
Okay, so Mr. Cohen and Mr. Dash, if you want to do your attorney questions for this witness only, and then we'll do the next witness, same type of procedure, then try to do the next witness. We'll get as far as we can, but we'll we'll not end as for everybody's understanding until all witnesses, including witnesses of the objectors, attorneys, and witnesses of the public have testified. So that may take more than tonight. So Larry and uh Mr. Dash, please go ahead.
Um, I don't know who you want first, um, but.
Either one.
Okay, um, Mr. Diggins, um, uh, well, first, I I have actually a overall question, Mr. Cohen. Um, are we going to hear any testimony concerning, I know an environmental impact statement was filed. Are we going to hear any testimony concerning uh the environmental impact statement? And if so, from what witness?
We will, yeah. We have Mike Green here from Enviro Tactics who prepared the environmental impact statement, so he's going to testify to that.
And he will testify as to issues concerning air pollution, noise, as well as the other normal environmental issues?
I I I don't, he's not really going to touch on noise or air pollution. He's going to touch on the issues that were covered by the environmental impact statement. So I mean, if you have questions relative to noise, for example, perhaps Tony would be the right witness?
Okay, well, uh, before we get into that, Mr. Diggins, I just want to review with you some statistics that you testified to. Uh, the overall size of this property in acres, please, again?
Approximately sixty-eight point oh four acres.
And the proposed square footage was eight hundred and some thousand uh between with reference to the two buildings?
Eight hundred and eighty thousand four and eighty square feet.
And the amount of pervious surface, I think you said, was twenty-seven percent. Am I correct?
Uh, no, sir. I don't think I described the amount of pervious surface.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you describe how much impervious surface will be uh that your site plan is showing?
Yes, sir. The the impervious surface was uh whereas uh sixty-five percent was permitted, we are at uh fifty-four percent.
Which uh fifty-four percent of sixty-eight acres, you could do that quicker than I can, is uh roughly uh forty acres approximately?
I'm sorry, the fifty-four percent of the sixty-eight?
Yes.
Uh, approximately thirty-seven acres?
Thirty-seven acres, okay. So you're having thirty-seven acres of impervious surface and you submitted the uh stormwater management plan or or plans to treat that uh runoff from that acreage. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, uh, I have not had an opportunity to review everything that was on file with the township. Uh, I presume that there is a landscaping plan.
Correct.
Uh, we heard no testimony about generally just landscape. We had no testimony, as I recall, about landscaping. Is that correct?
We, I basically discussed that we're in full compliance with the landscape requirements.
Well, whether you think you're in full compliance or not, I think it's incumbent upon you uh to present what you're proposing with landscaping. So certainly the board and its professionals can determine that. And the members of the public can question the landscaping plan and whether or not you're in compliance, the question is, what is the proposed landscaping? There's been no testimony with reference to that. And also, Mr. Diggins, you had indicated that you're supplying lights that are in conformance with the ordinance. I presume that there is a lighting plan uh showing the location of all exterior lighting and also the uh light flow from those fixtures as to foot candles, as to coverage area and et cetera. Uh, we've had no testimony other than a conclusion from you that the lighting meets all the ordinance requirements. We don't know if that's true or not uh without looking at it. Is that correct?
I didn't present uh in-depth testimony on the lighting plan, no. I'm happy to.
I didn't hear, I'm not saying in-depth testimony. I heard no testimony at all, except that our lighting meets all the ordinance requirements. Is that correct? Is that what you said?
Mr. Cohen, is the question whether, is it whether we present the testimony on that point or or are you asking us to present testimony on that point?
Well, it's your, I'm not asking you to do anything. Mr. Cohen, it's it's your case. I know you're experienced and you're going to present with testimony you deem necessary. All I want to find out is that other than the te- other than the statement of Mr. Diggins that the lighting uh meets all the ordinance requirements, I've heard no testimony concerning the lighting plan. Where are the lights proposed? This is a sixty-eight acre site which is going to have significant lighting on it, I presume, because there's a warehouse. And we haven't seen uh any, there's no testimony as to lighting plan.
The the colorized rendered site plan does have a lighting on it, and I did refer to the fact that they're uh primarily going to be wall packs and we had uh the ordinance requirement is less than a half foot of uh spill at the property line and we're sitting around point one. Uh, as part of the preliminary site plan that was submitted, uh, there is a photometric plan in there along with uh lighting fixtures and and standard details for lighting.
We want to say, again, I I know that you're a very experienced engineer and have presented these applications before, and there's a reason for a public hearing. We just don't present documents and ask the board for approval. There has to be testimony and and a right to be heard on all of those. Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Okay, so we've had no testimony uh concerning the lighting, no testimony concerning the landscaping, and so far, no testimony concerning issues which were covered in EIS or something like air pollution or noise uh so far. Um, the, would you cover the two accessways that you talked about before, Mr. Diggins? Uh, specifically location and how the traffic would flow?
Uh, could you be, please be more specific? You're talking about the acts, the accessways between the buildings or the points of access?
No, I'm talking about to act to ingress and egress from the site.
Yeah. And can we have uh Tony be able to share his screen?
He can share his screen.
So there's a, there's a point of access directly across um, from the, there's the driveway across the the street. Uh, this point of access has moved uh slightly northward on Demarest Avenue.
All right, well, let me just stick with that. Um, there are two main access points, as I recall. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, one is on to Demarest Road. Is that correct?
They are both on Demarest Road, sir.
Okay, they're both on Demarest Road. Demarest Road, as I understand it, is a two-lane road. Is that correct?
Correct.
And what is the uh width of Demarest Road? Do you know the the actual pavement and the right of way?
Uh, I do know that it's a variable width and uh variable width both in cartway and in right of way.
Um, what are the variable widths, if you know?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, is it shown on your plan?
It's shown as a variable width in my plan, sir. The cartway is shown.
And um even if you can scale it, can you tell us approximately how wide the cartway is on Demarest?
Sure, that's approximately twenty-two to twenty-four foot wide.
Twenty-two. Twenty-four foot wide. Is the applicant, to your knowledge, proposing any improvements to Demarest?
No.
Now, your testimony is that there, as I recall it, and correct me if I'm wrong, there are not basically a hundred and ninety loading docks for trucks. Is that correct, between the two buildings?
Uh, approximately, yes.
So that's possible, a hundred and ninety trucks plus, I believe, fifty or fifty-one spots for trailers that are not loading or unloading. Is that correct?
I didn't understand the last part of your phrase. There's fifty trailer parks on the west side of Building B.
Okay, so there's there's a hundred and ninety loading docks and fifty trailer spots for where the trailers aren't being used to unload or unload. Am I correct?
Correct.
And then you testified that we have employees, when you said employees that would range between a hundred to four hundred employees. Um, are we talking about assuming a twenty-four hour operation of these warehouses? Eight-hour operation or anything? Did you, when, and my question is, the estimate of employees, is that over all shifts or is that per shift?
No, sir. The estimate of employees I provide was based upon uh standard number of employees on a square footage basis for warehouses of this size. It wasn't based on shifts.
So when you said between one hundred and four hundred, let's presume this is a twenty-four hour warehouse, okay? And uh, there are three shifts normally in twenty-four hours. Would that be per shift? Or would that be four hundred employees divided over three shifts?
That depends on the tenant.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we had talked about when, when we answered the question about employees, that that's not really Tony's area of expertise and that we would have Mr. Ford to answer those questions. So I think, uh, Mr. Cohen, maybe uh Mr. Ford would be more appropriate to answer these, you know, sort of employees and operational type questions.
Understood. Well, let me ask you this, Mr. Diggins, when you designed this site, you designed it for operation of approximately two hundred and forty vehicle trucks, trailers, is that correct?
I don't believe I understand the question. Uh, are you talking?
Well, you, you have the possibility at any one time of, as I understand, a hundred and ninety plus fifty, two hundred and forty trucks uh trailers being present on the site at any one time, is that correct?
They could physically be parked in those spaces, yes, sir. I don't, if you're if you're looking at them circulating the site all at once, I don't think that'd be feasible now. But there, there are two hundred and forty spaces, as you had uh described earlier.
Okay. And between a hundred and four hundred employees, and we don't know if that's all shifts or per shift, but that's a fair amount of traffic, would you agree?
Uh. We'll have the traffic engineer coming on afterwards. You can ask him that question.
We, we, we understand that. You designed this site, am I right?
Yes.
And you designed it based upon certain criteria, you, am I correct?
You're correct. I guess the ambiguity lies in in what's, what is a fair amount of traffic? That's the part I guess I don't understand.
Okay, fair enough comment. Let me withdraw that question. You designed this on the basis that you're going to have almost nine hundred thousand square feet of warehouse, correct?
Eight hundred eighty, yes, sir.
Okay. Possibly two hundred and forty vehicles on the site at any one time, correct?
Potentially.
All right, and I presume in designing, you designed the traffic flow on the site, did you not?
I designed the site circulation.
Yes, that's what I meant.
Yes, sir.
The circulation for traffic on the site, you would have to know how many trucks and cars uh that would be using it in order for you to properly design a circulation plan. Is that a fair comment?
Yes, sir, although I would, I would uh point out that, again, as I said previously, it's, it's not feasible to think that two hundred and forty of these vehicles would be circulating the site at the same time.
I never said that. But I, well, let me ask you this. Based upon the maximum of vehicles of two hundred and forty, when you design the circulation, how many vehicles did you think would be circulating or operating on the site at any one time, including passenger vehicles and truck vehicles?
Typically, if the trucks are operating, your employee cars are parked. There are arrival rates. I think you see that in a traffic report. Again, the traffic engineer can speak that as well, but there are ingress and egress um peak hour traffic counts that basically speak to that. You may find more helpful asking the traffic engineer.
All right, when you design a circulation plan on a site such you did as this, you designed it for peak hour operation, is that a fair statement?
Sure, yes.
Okay, so obviously you'd have to know the amount of vehicles. How many vehicles did you calculate would be circulating on the site during the peak hour?
Um, in actuality, it's not designed that way. Uh, your truck courts, your parking areas all have very uh basic industry standard circulation widths. Uh, for example, your, your parking areas, the twenty-four foot wide drive aisles, your circulation drives are thirty foot wide. Your truck ports have a seventy foot wide drive aisle with a sixty foot dock area. Your parking, your trailer parks are fifty-five foot deep. Um, again, the arrival rates, the ingress, egress are in the traffic report.
Okay, now, there are a number of parking spaces along the side which fronts on Demarest, and frankly, I forgot our direction. Is that the west side or what?
That is, yeah, it's, it's western, uh, Demarest is to the west of Building B.
Are those the trailer uh uh parking lots or those uh for employees?
So this area here?
Yes.
Those are trailer parks, fifty trailer parks.
Okay, and they, they would have the ability to park there with a cab or just the trailers without cabs?
It typically, or they would be trailers without cabs.
Okay, but obviously cabs have to move them in and out, right?
Yes.
And uh was any consideration given to any conflict there since that is a major portion of the circulation plan that you developed as to those trailers moving in and out and those potential two hundred and forty vehicles trying to uh and by the way, the circulation, this would be the egress circulation coming out of that area, am I right? In other words, the traffic, the circulation, they would come in and go around the two buildings and come out in that area, is, is, did I recall that correctly?
So the trucks can circulate along the southern drive aisle and the northern drive aisle in between the buildings. I'm not sure I understand the last question, but uh there are stop bars, there are M U T C D uh striping um throughout the site for safe traffic operation. I don't understand the last question.
All right, well, let me ask you this. That accessway that's in front of those parking spaces for the trailers, is that to be used by the trucks exiting the site?
Sorry, is this driveway to be used for trucks exiting the site?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and the question is, have you uh considered the fifty trailers moving in and out with reference to the truck traffic using that driveway?
I'm not sure if I follow the question, sir, the fifty trailers.
If a trailer comes in or out, it's got to pull out into this driveway, am I right?
You're talking about one of the, are you talking about one of the park trailers, sir?
Yes.
They would have a, a yard truck come grab that trailer um or another rig take it off site, yeah. So when it comes down to this five stop bar, are you asking if there's going to be an adequate gap for it to pull into the drive aisle and exit the site?
No, no, what I'm saying is, over here, further up, in other words, go up, keep going, go up, right there, as those trailers come out of there and trucks are going down that driveway, is, did you consider the uh interplay of those trailers coming in front of those trucks as they're exiting the site?
Yes, sir.
And and how does that work?
Those are standard industry-sized drive aisles, so uh basically if the, if the yard truck's picking up, the, the trailer slip over there, uh, there's a car pulling out, or rather, a truck pulling out of the dock area, they can't necessarily both go at the same time if they're opposing. In general, your, your low operating yard speed's five mile per hour, um, so it's not really an issue. I don't know if I'm answering your question, though.
All right, well, let me ask you this. Are there speed limits posted there? Do you show any speed limit postings uh on your site plan after the trucks are not to exceed five miles per hour in that area?
Uh, typically not. It depends on the tenant.
Depends on the tenant, all right. Now, that brings me to another issue, as has been indicated and as asked by a number of the members. We have no idea uh what tenant or tenants are going to occupy the building at this time, and you don't have to answer that, that's already been uh admitted to. The way these buildings are designed, this may be a more proper question for the architect than I understand is going to testify. I'm going to ask you at this moment, and to the extent you may know this. I presume that this can be used, either one of these buildings could be used for multiple tenants. Do you know that?
Correct. You could have uh a tenant each building.
Well, you're going to have a tenant in each building, you could have ten tenants in each building, right?
Suppose that's possible.
Okay.
I don't know, the tent's practical, given where the office blocks are, though.
Well, let me say this, let me ask you this, and you're not the architect. You just indicated you didn't design the interior of the buildings, obviously, the buildings themselves.
Right.
But those office blocks are put in there for potential uses, and I presume that at some point office blocks may be added or changed in location depending upon the tenants, which would be done at the site plan application of particular tenants. Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Um, let's talk about is there, are there any things shown in the plan? I presume there are the site distances on Demarest uh exiting this site, is that correct?
Yes.
What are the traffic control signals? Just stop law, stop signs and stop bars or or are there lights or what?
No, there'd be uh stop, stop bars and stop signs, non-signalized intersections.
Okay, no other traffic controls other than the stop sign or stop bar, right?
Correct.
And um uh what are the site distances at each one of those access points on Demarest?
Uh, they're in excess of the ordinance. I think the ordinance requires a hundred. Uh, on this site plan, we have the ASTO's, ASTO site distance shown for the operating speed of um actually design speed of forty. Um. Sorry?
The, the, the ASTO, the determination speed is forty miles per hour, is that correct?
I believe that is, is design speed, yes.
Design speed, yes. And and what are the site distances shown for uh uh design speed of forty miles an hour on Demarest?
Four and forty-five feet.
At which direction, looking left or looking right, or both?
They're shown uh looking for both, four and forty-five feet for both.
A hundred and forty-five feet. Do you believe that a hundred?
Four hundred.
So just, oh, oh, just to clarify, four hundred and forty-five feet.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, four hundred and forty-five feet in both directions, is that correct?
Correct.
And you're showing a uh site triangle to be dedicated to the township or what?
Uh, it's our belief that the site triangles uh exist within the, the right of way.
Okay.
So therefore, no site triangles will be dedicated. That being said, if there's a landscape, um, one of the site triangles were to be in an area of landscape, the landscape would be set back.
Now, I know there was one mention of a monument sign that was mentioned that there was two proposed, now one is proposed. I don't recall you indicating the location of that sign. Can you show us the location of that sign?
I don't think I'm sharing.
So the sign is
Oh, oh, most like we need, uh, I think
the sign is ten feet north of that.
We need, we need Tony to, can you share your screen? Yeah, there you go. There you go.
The sign's located in that area right, right there, just north of the driveway.
I'm sorry, what, what driver are we talking about on Demarest? Is it the one on?
This is Southern Drive, sir.
Southern, the Southern Drive, okay, and that's the only proposed signage on the building, is that correct?
Correct.
For the building, I should say, and I, I presume there are traffic direction signs throughout the site, is that also true?
Yeah, the M E T C D uh site, site traffic controls, stop signs, uh directional arrows on the, the pavement.
Now, um, uh, the drainage plan that you had indicated, um, uh, I presume there's a separate uh plan showing the drainage uh system that you're proposing with the infiltration basins?
Correct.
And uh do you meet uh the D E P? Obviously, this is a major development for stormwater. Did you meet the, all of the D E P requirements for the stormwater uh requirements and regulations for the dis- discharge of stormwater on the site and the retention of stormwater?
Yeah, the stormwater designs are in full compliance with New Jersey Administrative Code seven colon eight. And it will be reviewed by Sparta Township and N J D E P.
Um, um, you had indicated that the wastewater is going to be treated by an onsite system?
Correct.
And you already have approval for that?
Correct.
And by the way, I didn't see it, and it may have been. Has, has that approval been posted with the town?
Hmm, the town approved it, um.
I mean, is it matter, is it part of the application so that the public can see the approval that was granted by the D E P?
It was public.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know that it was uh part of the application, uh, Mr. Cohen, so in any event, we can, we can submit a copy of it.
Yeah, submit a copy on, on the township, uh, and they can post it on the website. I didn't see it, and I'm, I'm, that doesn't mean it wasn't.
No, I, I, I think what happened was, it was that approval for the uh, the onsite wastewater treatment was obtained post-application being submitted. Um, but we can certainly provide a copy. It was before, that was before, but in any event, it wasn't part of the application, so we'll provide a copy to the town.
Mr. Diggins, did your office design the wastewater treatment system?
No, sir.
And who designed that, if you know?
Uh, Owen Dykstra.
All right. Site plan, where that onsite, onsite treatment system is located?
Again, this is a rendered, colorized rendered site plan, so it's not necessarily a utility plan, but this area up here is the, the area set aside uh for the onsite uh wastewater treatment recharge area.
Okay, and, and how many gallons per day is that designed to treat?
That approval is for uh two thousand gallons per day.
And that's based on the eight hundred and eighty thousand square foot and the proposed use as to what, if you know?
I'm sorry, are you asking if it's, repeat the question, please?
Yeah, the amount of gallons is determined by the D E P is based upon the amount of the type of use, the square footage, et cetera, am I right, on commercial designed uh se- uh sewer, uh onsite treatment facilities?
Uh, it's actually, this seven colon nine approval is based on employees.
Okay, and how, do you know how many employees this system was designed for at two thousand gallons per day?
Yeah, it was designed for a hundred employees.
A hundred employees.
Correct.
What happens if we meet your maximum? I think you said that this could accommodate up to four hundred and fifty employees and presume that the uh employee count goes up to four hundred or four hundred and fifty instead of the one hundred that this system was designed for?
Sure, uh, that would have a higher uh demand rate, and we are in the process of getting a W Q M P amendment for that higher gallonage.
So will the ultimate system be designed for a maximum of four hundred and fifty employees?
The ultimate system would be designed for ten thousand gallons, uh, in that gallonage, uh, with three hundred uh warehouse employees, and then there's twenty thou- or, yeah, twenty thousand square foot of office, so potentially, yes.
Okay, so let me understand this. Right now, you have an approval for a two thousand gallon per day system, but we were going to need a ten thousand gallon per day system in order to meet all the needs of this uh proposed development. Is that a fair statement?
No, sir. Uh, right now, we have a, a two thousand gallon approval that will allow a tenant with up to a hundred employees and eighty delivery drivers to occupy and use the site.
Okay, and what happens when that increases?
When what increases?
The number of employees.
The number of, when the number of employees increases, uh, again, they would have to come in initially uh to get tenancy before the planning board, and so the number of employees is presumably one of the things that they discuss.
The, the idea is that they would need additional approval, Mr. Cohen. The, the idea is that they would need additional approval, Mr. Cohen. Uh, there would be, there would be additional approvals required if they wanted to increase beyond the, the hundred employees that were, were maxed out at currently.
So right now, just the way I understand it, Mr. Diggins, uh, if the, if the planning board approved this plan as presented, all right? That there could never be, unless you got an amendment to the onsite treatment facility, there can never be, uh, a use of this building that would exceed a hundred employees, am I correct?
The, yeah, the use would be initially capped at a hundred, uh, employees.
And would that, that only deals with the employees working in the facility and not the truck drivers that come and go? Am I, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, there's a separate gallons for the, for the, uh, delivery drivers. So basically, this, this gallon considers eighty delivery drivers.
Okay, so right now, the way the onsite treatment facility is scheduled, the limitations on the site right now are no more than a hundred onsite employees and no more than eighty trucks at one time, is that correct?
That's correct, but you could, you could move that around. It could be more delivery drivers or less delivery drivers as long as it fell under that two thousand gallon per day gallonage. And I guess one thing I should make clear, though, that this is no different than any other sewer permit in that you need the sewer permit in order to get your resolution compliance. So in this case, we're kind of in a unique situation where we do have a two thousand gallon per day, so there is the opportunity to put a uh, unique tenant in there that, that only needs a hundred, um, employees or eighty delivery drivers. Uh, the WQMP amendment is ongoing, um, and that is likely, um, going to be done not too long after, uh, this is going to be, um, looking for CO. At least, and Mr. Ford can talk to that. That's, that's the idea.
And when you say that, wh- what I understand is that you're going to proceed for a larger treatment facility, is, is that what I understand you're saying?
Yeah, the WQMP amendment is being done such that we can exceed the two thousand, uh, gallons per day. Uh, your demand.
Now, from this wastewater treatment facility, where is the water discharged to? Is that, uh, infiltrated into the ground?
Um, yeah, the basically, uh, pre-treated and pumped to, um, the area up here.
Where would that be?
Be west of Building B.
Uh huh. Right, area where, where the treatment facility is going to be constructed, right?
Could you repeat that last part?
Yeah, it's right in the area where the treatment facility is going to be constructed, correct?
Uh, no, the, the treatment facility would be, uh, likely, not likely, the treatment facility would be down on this, uh, southern, southeastern corner of, uh, Building A.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you told us the treatment facility was going to be in up in that area.
No, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry, so we, it is.
Yeah, so this, this area.
Directional wise, what corner is that of Building B?
Uh, Building A.
Building A, I'm sorry.
Is, uh, be the southeast corner. This area here.
Yeah.
Adjacent to Demerit would be the area where the wastewater, three wastewater is pumped to, um, to recharge.
Okay.
Again, one thing I'd just like to point out, I didn't design this system, uh, I'm not, uh, my firm is not designing or seeking the WQMP amendment, um, so we need additional, uh, testament on that, we'll have to get in this here.
Is, is that system where that water is pumped to, is that a detention basin with infiltration into the groundwater, or does it run off anyplace?
That is, uh, basically, it's it's, uh, pumped into the, it's, it's basically a drip dispersion field. Again, I didn't design it, but it's a drip dispersion field and it, uh, percolates back into, uh, the ground.
Uh, Mr. Cohen, are, are we going to have any, are you presenting any witnesses with reference to design and the operation of that treatment facility? Are we going to hear any witnesses to that effect?
Uh, we, we weren't intending to do that tonight, Mr. Cohen, but I think.
Stay tonight, but whenever.
Well, at, at some point, we can bring a witness to, to testify to that, sure.
Well, uh, again, that's up to the board and up to you. You, you're the applicant, obviously. I'm just asking whether or not one is going to be presented. Uh, uh, Mr. Diggins, and, and I don't want to take up, uh, uh, any more time. I think I'm pretty much at the moment right now, but uh, again, the potable water sys- how is the property going to be provided with potable water?
Uh, there's a, uh, Sparta Water, uh, main in Demerit.
Okay, and, and have you received authorization, uh, for the number of gallons that's going to be needed from the Sparta Water System?
So that'd be done as part of the site plan approval process, uh, we're in contact with, with Sparta, um, Sparta Water. And so we'll be coordinating with them, making water application with Sparta Water.
Do you know if there's capacity in the Sparta Water System to, uh, to supply this facility based upon number of employees we discussed?
Yeah, I believe there's capacity for both scenarios, uh, and they indicated that they'll need to amend their figures of the American Master Water Permit, so it does appear to be capacity, yes.
All right, um, I think that's all the questions I have at the moment. I, just a, a, a brief comment, uh, um, having done this for a number of years, I, I'm quite surprised by the, uh, testimony of, and I don't mean the quality of the testimony as far as the engineer is concerned, I'm sure he's very competent. But I'm quite surprised at the paucity of testimony concerning the, uh, size of this application. I gotta believe in square footage that this may be the biggest application ever filed in Sparta. I don't know that for a fact, but if it isn't, it's certainly way up there, I'm sure. And, uh, I'm amazed that, uh, you know, we had maybe a half hour or whatever it was of a presentation of a site plan of this complexity and considering this impact upon the community. I have nothing further at this point, thank you.
Um, Mr. Mr. Cohen, I have a, a few questions, uh, for you, please. The, um, the square footage of Building A, can you just please recap that quickly for me, please?
Sure, it's three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred square feet.
In Building B?
That is five hundred and eight thousand, uh. Sorry?
And, and, and so the total square footage, uh, you would agree is eight hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and eighty thousand square feet, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. So, so because I too have not had a full opportunity to try to, to digest all the numbers, there's, there's, you would agree that there's a lot of numbers in the plans. Um, and, and Mr. Mr. Cohen, maybe this is a question for you, just, just doing some research prior to this. Um, is there a reason, uh, Mr. Cohen, that you have represented on your firm's website that this is an application that it includes one million square foot, uh, warehouse facility?
I'm, I'm not sure what you're referring to, but I, I think, you know, um, I'm not.
Let me clarify. Uh, on your website, sir, um, your firm's website, it indicates that you are representing a developer presenting an application for a warehouse of one million square feet. My question to Mr. Cohen is at any point in time.
I, I, I think, yeah, I think, I think.
Let me finish the question. At, at, at any point in time was, was this application, uh, including, uh, the two warehouses, one million square feet?
Uh, I, I think that update from our website might be a couple of years old, and maybe initially it was discussed it would be approximately a million square feet, but, you know, again.
The question is actually for Mr. Cohen, so I just, just looking for an answer. Wa- was this application ever proposed to be a million square feet?
No, 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 this application was not.
So you would agree that it's a inaccurate representation on your website?
Sure, and I'll be happy to correct it.
Are, are there any other numbers, uh, that you wanted to correct at this point in time, uh, with respect to the application that would enhance the credibility of this application?
Is that for me, the engineer, or Mr. Cohen?
Yes, well, you, sir.
No, not at this time. I think that, that there were a parking stall off here or there, we've been talking, uh, very closely with the township engineer. Uh, and as Mr. Cohen pointed out, there will be, uh, numerous re-submissions, um, as we move forward towards final site plan, so I, I'm confident with where this stands now.
It's, it's, I appreciate, uh, if you would please look and double check your numbers because instilling the confidence in the members of the public, uh, especially when the board are the gatekeepers to that information is very important, okay? And I think you would recognize that.
I understand.
Um, sir, um, would you agree with me that there are tractor trailers, uh, being, uh, parked on these premises?
Yes.
And those are considered, uh, freight vehicles?
Yes.
And you would agree, sir, that these tractor trailers are taking trips between y- your proposed facility and some other proposed destination?
Yes.
And you would also agree, sir, that these trips are, uh, include as part of their, uh, destination or journey, the rail facility that this project is adjacent to, sir?
Uh, I didn't follow that question, I'm sorry.
Okay, let me, let me, let me repeat it then. Would you, would you agree that the trips that are being made by these freight vehicles are, uh, include a stop with, uh, the rail facility? Or that they interact with the rail facility?
There's, there's freight, there's freight coming in to the, uh, facility, uh, that then would be parceled off to other facilities, is that?
Yeah, is, is there, is there an interaction with the railway system, the trains?
Yes.
There is, right?
Correct.
And you would also agree, sir, that the storage of freight or cargo is, is being temporary on this site?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'm going to direct you, sir, to the definition of a trucking terminal as it's set forth in the ordinance. It states that a trucking terminal is a premises which is used for the temporary parking of motor freight vehicles between trips and for the transfer of freight. Between trucks or between trucks and rail facilities for shipment elsewhere. And where the storage of freight or cargo is, is only temporary. You sort of have testified to that definition. And you have characterized this application as a warehouse. Where in accordance with the ordinance definition of a trucking terminal, your testimony corroborates that this is an application for a trucking terminal. And I would, uh, ask you, sir, why you believe this is a warehouse uh, where you have also testified that you do not know what wares are being stored? Nor do we know what tenants are being, uh, inhabited at these premises. So although the application comes in as a warehouse, sir, reasonable minds could conceive this application as a trucking terminal, especially because it meets the prima facie definition of a trucking terminal as set forth in the ordinance. And you would agree with me, sir, that the ordinance, the ED Development Section eighteen dash four point two nine does not permit trucking terminals. Instead, it provides them as a conditional use, correct?
All right, Mr. Collins, can we, can we short circuit this line of questioning? I mean, Mr. Dash, hold, hold on a second, hold on a second. Do you have the definition of warehouse in front of you? Because I could read it. And a warehouse is a permitted use in the ED zone, so can, can we, can we stop this?
Uh, actually, we can, because this is a very important, uh, consideration that, that, that goes to the heart.
Mr. Dash, he's not your witness, so if you want to give speeches, that's for later. Um, or, and for presentation of your own witness. If you want to give, and ask another question, let's try to focus on questions, okay, not speeches.
Well, the, the, the question was asked to the witness, sir, do you have any, uh, reason to, 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 to divert your testimony from what you just indicated in terms of the definition of a trucking terminal?
So you asked me questions, you felt compelled you to, to say that the use is a trucking terminal. In fact, there's common elements between warehousing, storage and distribution. So if you're making those associations, I, I'm not affirming those for you. In my view, it's a permitted use in economic development zone, uh, whereas warehousing, storage and distribution is permitted.
Okay, understood. I think the record has been made clear that there has been a raised doubt that this application is not a considered a warehouse. I have the definition of a warehouse, but I would ask that this application prior to proceeding, uh, because there's been no testimony that this is actually a warehouse. Uh, in fact, there's been testimony that we don't know what's being stored here. And this is suitable, and I'm, I'm, I'm making this point for the record, that an interpretation, a zoning interpretation be made whether this application is a trucking terminal or a warehouse. Because that will in turn de- determine whether variances are required, which they will be in, in, in connection with a trucking terminal. I think it's a critical point in this application. It is not a warehouse according to the definition of the ordinance.
Uh, can I make a point? Can I make a point?
Right, I, I, I know we have a lot of, uh, members of the public here, um, you know, looking eager to, to ask questions, so uh, I just, have you had a chance to review the goals of the, uh, ordinance, sir?
Uh, if I may address your last statement, uh, the operation and storage of, of the goods in the, the warehouse buildings, as we stated earlier, was going to be performed by Mr. Ford. So the assertions you made were, were done prior to that witness being on, so I just wanted to point that out.
Okay.
Uh, what was your next question?
Have you had a chance to review the, the, uh, purposes of the zone ordinance?
Yes.
Good, so, um, can, can you state in your, uh, uh, under oath as you are that this application substantially meets the goals of the township ordinance?
The Diamond Chip Industrial Park as proposed, uh, is, is proposing two rail-dependent, uh, warehouse buildings. And that was a, in fact, the reason for amending the ordinance, uh, for properties located in the ED zone along the railway.
So, so, uh, let me just ask you a few pointed, uh, questions then, uh, would you agree, one of the ordinances, uh, would you, would you, would you agree in your opinion that this, uh, application promotes the conservation of open space?
Yes.
And, uh, it, it, does it promote the conservation of energy? Um, was that a yes? I'm sorry.
Chairman Reina, given the time, can we move on to the other testimony for the experts? We have a traffic plan and an environmental plan we need to go through.
There, there, there should be no haste in this application. We, we, we have a very important application.
Mr. Dash, I'm not saying haste, but we have stuff we need to hear till we can continue to ask more questions. And the board is allowing you to question at the moment, but we have other experts to listen to as well.
Okay, so tell me what provision of the rule of law says that there's a time limit on when we can proceed with this. If you allow me to finish, I'll move rather expeditiously, I have a few more questions.
Does this promote the free flow of traffic while discouraging urban sprawl?
Mr. Dash, I'm, what, what, what purposes, are you, are you referring to purposes of zoning under the MLUL, or are you looking at purposes?
Sparta Township, Sparta Township, Section eighteen dash one point one, purposes of the Sparta Township zoning ordinance.
All right, what, what was that order, uh, that citation again, please?
Section eighteen dash one point one, purposes of the Sparta Township Comprehensive Land Management Code. Are we preventing urban sprawl as part of this application? Yes or no?
We develop inside.
We're not, we're not going to go, no, no. Mr. Collins, we're not going to go through the purposes of zoning here. We've got a fully conforming application, no variances. Um, I don't think we need to hit every purpose of, uh, zoning in the state of New Jersey. That was the reason for adopting the ordinance amendment to the ED zone to to permit this project, and we are fully consistent with this ordinance, so.
All right, I'll, I'll move on. I think we can move on to the next witness. I think, uh, enough testimony has been elicited to make the record clear that this is not a fully conforming application, because it is, it is not deemed a warehouse. Number one, and number two, we've already heard testimony that the applicant, excuse me, the witness is not comfortable in, in, uh, responding to that. It does not meet the purposes of the Sparta Township zoning ordinance. So, uh, respectfully, Mr. Uh, Mr. Cohen, you can state whatever conclusions you want, but the testimony from the witness sitting next to you has indicated this is not a fully conforming application because it doesn't meet the plain language of the definition of, of, uh, in fact, it meets the plain language of a trucking terminal. So you can disagree, sir, but we can, we can move on to your next witness.
Okay.
Mr. Collins, I just, as the board's planner, I just wanted to make a quick comment on the, um, use of the definitions and, um, my own assessment, and I think, um, And I think Mr. Simmons' assessment of the use related to our review of the application. While Mr. Dash does point out the definition for a trucking terminal, you did read it. The definite, definition for warehouse is also included, as is warehouse permitted in the zone. Oftentimes, and I have dealt with this in plenty of other municipalities, my, my firm also represents the city of Elizabeth, which has a number of trucking and warehouse facilities. And we've gone into depth with the definition, especially as warehousing has evolved over the past few years. The types of warehousing and the new nuances of it have evolved as well. The IT recognizes a number of different warehousing facilities. A trucking terminal, the definition, I have to say, is lacking a little bit in the Sparta code, just from my, my review of it right now and my review of this application. But, but what it should note, and it does kind of allude to it, as do the conditions for the use, is more of what's known as a cross stocking warehouse. One of the conditions required is that achievement of the site does not exceed ten times the ground floor of the building. And that's generally because trucking terminals or cross stock warehousing or integrated service, service facilities all have a characteristic of a small building square footage, a very slim building with trucking terminals on both sides of the building, so that things can go in and out of those trucks very quickly. They're also known as fulfillment, well, they can be fulfillment centers, but those are also larger. But it's known as cross stock warehousing essentially. The definition does not include that, but as I said, the, the conditions required for that kind of a loo, trucking terminal does significantly differ from that of a warehouse. And I, my own review of this application, review of the proposed use and review of the layout of the building would definitely not conclude that this is a trucking terminal or a cross stock warehouse. This is more of a traditional, traditional warehouse facility. Now we can get into the new us as a logistics center versus distribution center versus long term storage warehousing. But for, for the purposes of here, this is a warehouse and distribution use.
Thank you, Catherine Sermad, our township planner. So let's go forward to the next witness and then try to get as far as we can on the next witness.
I just wanted to, really isn't a question, just indicate something as a result of that last discussion, which I don't really want to enter into, but it's set to the, if there is an issue.
Let's go on, Larry, we're not going to do argument now. We're going to go to the next witness.
I'm not arguing, and I'm not arguing that point, I'm just.
Well, you're trying to give a speech, and we're not here for speeches right now, so let's, let's move on. The board has, the board has suggested, let's go to the next witness after the board wants.
Okay, next witness is Richard Saunderson. He is our project architect.
Mr. Saunderson, please raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name and give us at least a business address.
It is Richard Saunderson. That's S as in Sam, A U N D E R S O N. I work with Margulies Holesley Architecture. Our business address is five four five Eighth Avenue, New York City.
Thank you.
Sorry, Tom.
And please do his qualifications, thank you.
Sure. Mr. Saunderson, could you give the board your professional qualifications, please?
Yes, sir, I am a registered architect in the state of New Jersey, as well as other states, and I am registered in good standing. I have over thirty years of experience as an architect on many building types.
And unless there are any questions, I would ask that the board accept Mr. Saunderson's qualifications as a architect.
I have no questions for qual deere of qualifications, but we should open to Mr. Cohen and Mr. Dash for any qual deere on qualifications.
I have none.
I, I would just ask the witness, what is his experience? Does he specialize in this type of development, warehouse, whatever it is, development? And is, what portion of this practice incorporates that type of design?
Yes, in Margulies Holesley, it is the majority of our work. I've been with Margulies Holesley for approximately four and a half years now. And we do specialize in warehouses and other large commercial buildings.
Very good, thank you. I certainly have no objection to his qualifications.
Yes, the board will recognize and accepts the qualifications of Mr. Saunderson as a registered architect, and please go ahead, gentlemen.
Sure. So, Richard, I'm going to share my screen.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. So this, this exhibit is actually ten slides, which give you an overview architecturally of the preliminary design of the buildings at this point.
Yeah, so, so Mr. Collins, I think we would mark, this is all one exhibit. So we're going to slide through as Mr. Saunderson testifies, so we can mark this as Exhibit A three. And that would be, you know, architectural, architectural testimony exhibit, or however we want to call it.
That's fine. And if it's an electronic version, you can provide after tonight's meeting, please do that. And that'll be A three, and please go ahead and describe it.
Sure. So, Mr. Saunderson, why don't we start with the picture that we're looking at here?
Okay, this is a rendering, photorealistic rendering, aerial view of the, of the development, looking from the southeast, looking towards the northwest. So at the lower left hand corner of the image is the Demerist Road site, Demerist Roadway. This is a ground level view of one of the buildings. This shows the fenestration on the building. The exterior walls are made up of precast concrete panels. There will be a painted finish on these panels. The specific corners of the buildings would have internally accessory office areas. And those portions of the building would have aluminum and glass storefront areas, as is shown here. The yellow band indicates a small canopy at the entrance, which is part of the visual identification to indicate to pedestrians and motorists where the office entrances are to the buildings. Next slide. This is a site plan, architectural site plan, showing the massing of the two buildings on the property. This shows how the two buildings are designed, both in plan and in elevation to be sister buildings, which work with that center truck court. Along the right hand side, of course, as described earlier, is the rail siding. Next slide. This is the interior plan of the building A, which is the building which abuts the rail siding. At the top of the drawing is the siding and platform access to the, to the siding. To the lower portion of the drawing are the truck docks and the two connecting pathways to the adjacent building. Next slide. This is the adjacent building B. Again, at the top of, of the drawing are the two connecting paths to the building A. These buildings, and we can jump to the next slide.
I'm a little too far.
That's okay. So these are, these are elevations of the buildings. Again, it shows the concrete panels painted in a multi-color scheme. Again, these buildings have been designed to be sister buildings, to be compatible with each other and seen as one development. Next one. Next one. These are schematic building sections, and what these show is a design clear height of forty feet high. Forty feet is kind of an industry standard these days for warehousing. This building is designed as a warehouse. The two outside bays in each building are called speed bays locally. And that's where the, the goods are loaded and unloaded. The center bays of the building are at least forty foot clear height with anticipated racking for storage of goods in these two buildings. See, one building has a center ridge, the other building is a single slope.
That's it.
So that's the overview of the property. I can tell you, let's see if we have everything. This is, again, this is a precast concrete exterior wall. The interior structure of the building would be steel. Steel columns, steel girders, steel open, open web, steel joists between those girders. It's anticipated to be filed as an S one type storage building, which is basically for class one to four commodities, basically consumer products. No hazardous materials are anticipated here. Let's jump down to the plan again. One more, one more. So diagrammatically in the corners of the buildings, in this building, the lower left, the lower right hand corner, we've mapped out office areas, and those are anticipated to be accessory offices to support the warehouse function. Those offices may include managerial offices, administrative offices, employee lounges, et cetera, to support the, support the staff. Again, these plans are diagrammatic. They don't show, obviously, they do not show all the restaurants, facilities, et cetera. That would be very tenant specific, as would the actual office layout. That would be tenant specific. So I believe that gives you an overview of the architecture. Again, this is a preliminary site plan application. The architecture is schematic at this point.
Okay, Mr. Collins, go to board questions for Mr. Saunderson.
Before you do, just Mr. Saunderson, I just want to confirm that although there might have been a note on the architecture plan, there is no proposal here to have a manufacturing facility in these buildings, is there?
That is correct. The, it is anticipated to be a warehouse storage building, S one occupancy storage.
Thank you.
Okay, Tom, do we want to go to any of our, our town planning SMEs or Stan or anybody?
Yeah, Mr. Simmons. That'd be good first, and then the board members and then Mr. Cohen and Mr. Dash.
Okay. Mr. Simmons, any comments or questions as it relates to the architecture?
Just a couple, Mr. Chairman, it's Dave Simmons again. Just referring again to my report of February ninth, twenty twenty two, for the architect. As far as these buildings go, as far as any climate control, just looking at the exhibit you've got of the aerial view of the buildings right now, as far as HVAC equipment and what have you, what do you anticipate? And I know it's not fully designed yet, but what do you anticipate? Roof mounted areas or ground mounted units, or how would you handle that?
Well, typically on these buildings, they are, they are heated and ventilated only, not air conditioned, except for the office areas. So in a typical application, you would see small rooftop units, which would be set back from the facade, typically at least a bay into the, into the building. These rooftop units are probably three or four feet high, perhaps five if they're larger. They're not large units, they're relatively low. There would be multiple units rather than one large unit. And they would be located, again, interior from the facade, setback from the facade.
Would you normally see on a, a building like this, any type of screening of those, those units or just up on the roof?
Typically, they're not screened because typically they're far enough back from the facade that anyone near the building would not be able to see them. In other words, if they're on top of the building, it's forty feet high, and they're set back from the facade, they would not be visible to anyone near the building.
But as far as being visible from any elevated distance, for example, the intersection of Demeress Road and Houses Corner Road, might be able to see them?
We'd have to study that, I think, to, to answer that question.
Understood. And the other question I have just on the architectural, do you foresee in these buildings any necessity for emergency generation? And if so, where would that be incorporated on the site?
The occupancy by itself would not require emergency generation. Specific tenants may request it. But by itself, the S one occupancy does not require emergency generation, no.
That's all I have at this point on architecture, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Simmons. Catherine, any, any questions or comments from your side?
One, the question had come up before about the potential tenancy and maybe multiple tenancy of the buildings. And this is more hypothetical, but in the, in the case that there were multiple tenants on the side or multiple tenants within a building, is there anything internally or externally that would change about the buildings? If, to accommodate multiple tenants?
I would say no. I mean, you have the possibility, as it's drawn right now, for multiple corner entrances as it's designed, with the various accessory offices shown in the plans. More than four tenants, I, there would probably be some minor architectural fenestration changes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Catherine. Diana, can you do a roll or just rundown for the board members to see if there are any specific questions again, related to the architecture component?
Yes, Chairman Reyna. Councilwoman Quinn?
Hi, I have a couple of questions and then just a, a quick clarifier. So on the roof, what is that material and is that solar? It's hard to tell from it. It looks almost like, I mean, is, is there a plan to put solar up there?
Solar could be accommodated on these, on these buildings. It doesn't always prove to be economical. But I think that's a business decision that would have to be addressed by the operational team.
Okay, so what is the, what's the material on the roof? That looks like a pretty flat roof.
That's true. It's a low slope roof. It probably would be a quarter of an inch per foot or so slope. Typically, what we do is a single ply membrane on these roofs, over insulation, of course, over roof insulation.
Okay, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, obviously, you're, you are an architect, not, not myself. But we get a lot of snow up here, so I'm, I just wanted to ask what was going to be on that roof and what the pitch is, because it looks, it looks pretty flat. Also, the, the warehouses, I, I think, at least for, for me right now, I would, I would like to make a recommendation to the chair that, that we maybe go back a few steps here, because for me, I think what's missing is we're all looking at the, the site and the buildings and everything like that, but we don't really have a good idea as far as what this is being used for, what the intention is. Are things being stored here like a warehouse? Are they being rented out for individual businesses? We have warehouses all over Sparta. They all have, you know, some different uses to them. So I would like to, at the conclusion of this part of the testimony, maybe just take a step back and just get an, an understanding, a clear understanding as to exactly what the potential purpose and, and use for this facility is, just so we're all clear, rather than looking at the buildings and trying to retrofit them into what we think they're going to be used for. Because I'm hearing things like, you know, trucking and, and truck stops and this and the other thing. And I think we just need to hear from the applicant exactly what this thing is and, and exactly the intended use for it. Also, I, I might have misheard, but when you were talking about the front, did, did, did you say there were stores in front? Or was it some kind of doors in front that I just mishear it?
Well, actually, what I said was storefront, which is an industry, right? It's an industry term for basically glass and aluminum framing.
Okay.
So it will be glass doors, probably fixed glass above that to provide the visual indication of an entrance.
Okay.
I say storefront, it doesn't mean retail store. It really means aluminum and glass system.
So it's a facade, it's not actually a store in front of a warehouse space?
That's correct.
The look of it, I just want to make sure I'm clear.
No, no, you're absolutely correct. It, it is a facade treatment at the anticipated accessory office areas.
Okay, and in looking at this drawing, the, in the beginning of it, so what we're looking at closest to the bottoms of our screen, where the trees are, that all right now, if I'm, if I'm understanding the. that all right now, if I'm understanding the diagram, and this is why I want to clarify, this is now where we would see when we pull in the ready mix apparatus, correct? In this corner here?
Yes, I'd say that's accurate.
Okay, so it looks to me like there's a significant improvement there in that it's clean and it's raised, which I want to just confirm. I know Dr. Parker had asked before about the aquifer. It's something that we are all very concerned with. And so it looks to me like there's a significant raise here to fill in, to cap it off, to clean it up, and then raise it up to be approximately the same level, if I'm looking at it correctly, right, as the warehouses?
Yes, I think there's a slight upgrade from the Demarest Road and the site itself, once you're at the warehouse level, is essentially flat.
Okay, because that's going to play in when we talk about preserving and preservation of the aquifer itself. Okay. So again, I think, I don't want to ask a question out of turn here, but I think the rest of my questions really center around usage and process and that kind of thing. So if we can, at some point, just go back to that as the preliminary and get an idea, because again, we have a lot of warehouses in Sparta right now. They are utilized for very different things. And I just want everyone to at least leave this meeting tonight with a common understanding of the intended purpose of this. And also, again, to clarify, any tenants that come in here are going to have to come before the planning board and going to have to get acceptable approval. We've already clarified that, but the rest of my question about the uses, I think we can maybe just have that covered when you testify as to the overall, you know, what is the intended use of this?
And Ms. Quinn, just to answer that briefly, our next witness, Mr. Ford, is going to answer all those questions. That's the purpose of having his testimony, so we will answer all of those hopefully for you with our next witness.
Great. I mean, I know we've all, you know, I'm trying to just do diligence as well. I know residents have contacted me with some concerns. I'm just trying to bring them up in the right space in the session, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Parker?
Yeah, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
We're just going to try to limit my questions to the architectural point here, and I'm just curious. When the trucks back up, it looks like it's a flat operation. Is there any protection to keep them from banging into the buildings? Any bollards or anything along there?
Yes, there's two types of protection. There's typically a dock seal at each, at the active dock doors, which is basically a rubber three sided enclosure, actually, it's four sided enclosure, top, sides, and bottom, and at various points, for example, at the metal stairs, at the man doors, the personnel doors, there are typically bollards to prevent the trucks from accidentally hitting the metal stairs.
Okay. The surface area, I'm sure that you designed the building so it won't collapse under certain weight, but how do you remove the snow or if the amount of weight, the roof hole, the amount of snow that were acceptable in this area? Because it can be pretty heavy and pretty thick at times.
Yes, understood, and we
And it weighs.
Yeah, we would work with structural engineers to design the structure to meet the snow load for sure. And to answer the question about removal, it would drain by gravity. It drains to the perimeter gutters, down leaders on the face of the buildings, and then it would go into the underground storm system.
I don't have any further questions at this time on the architecture. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hearsby?
Yeah, I don't have any questions about the architecture. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvester?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just a few quick questions. In your conceptual design, are you considering on applying for trying to make it elite certified or meet sustainability goals of the state and/or at least get elite certification, if possible, or was that still in the conceptual phase?
I think at this point, it's a conceptual design and that's something that would be addressed in the detailed building design.
All right, and then in regards to, and my questions are sporadic, they're not in any sync, because I've been taking notes, listening to the testimony. In regards, circling back to the renewable component, if you had units on the roof, you still said that can support a percentage of, if it's economically feasible, some type of solar array system, roof mounted system, what elevation would that add to the current roof line?
It would be, I think we would be guessing at this point, it has to do with the angle of the PV panels, but a few inches to
Okay, and then in regards to the usage, and I think my question really will be held for Mr. Ford, but in regards to tenant use, if you had a tenant coming in with refrigeration some type of heavy refrigeration or air condition need, where would you be putting the refrigeration unit? I'm assuming it would be on the roof as well?
Not necessarily. I think that would have to be planned out on a tenant specific basis. It's very possible it could be on the ground, be in the truck court, there's other places to put the refrigeration.
Okay, and then my last question is, duration of construction and more of your conceptual pro forma, what was the build out for a facility of this size or magnitude and timeline?
Yeah, I would say it could be on the order of a year. I think, I guess that's a business decision on how aggressively they wanted to build it, but most likely would take up close to a year.
Okay, so would this be a phased approach or would you be building these units simultaneously?
I believe that's a ownership. Yeah, I think that's probably an ownership decision, actually. I'll defer to
Yeah, Mr. Sylvester, we'll have Jim Ford speak to that.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Mr. Ski? Mr. Ski? Mr. Kohler?
Hello, yes, got a couple of different questions. A member of the public was curious if the roofing material was planned to be TPO or EPDM?
It could be either one of those. Other buildings, we've used either of those materials. We're not at that level of detail right now. But both of those would qualify as membrane roofing systems.
Okay, but that would be known when you came in for final site plan approval, so we would know that before you would get final approval, correct?
I think that's fair to say, yes.
Thank you. And I apologize, this might go back to the civil engineer, but I was looking at page five of the PDF, has the proposed buildings and has elevation lines, but none of the elevation lines are labeled. So I'm having trouble deciding how steep the slopes are around the building and if they slope up or down. Considering that we might not get through it tonight, would that be something that you could supply to us?
Yeah, we can, to the extent that we don't get you that answer tonight, by the end of the night, we can certainly supply you with the grading plan. I believe it's a part of the site plan already. So it is part of the site plan package, but we will, we'll make sure we highlight that for you.
Okay, yeah, because I found the one that has the current grading on it. I just couldn't find the new grading page, so if I missed it, I apologize. Then also for for the architect we talked, when would we cover the lighting and the landscape plans? Only that we have that as a specific discussion, would that be now or would that be later? Do we have a different expert who would cover that?
Well, I think what we tried to do was, Mr. Diggan had showed the conceptual plan that had landscaping, the lighting shown on it, but what we're going to do at this point is probably bring Mr. Diggan back just in response to some of Mr. Cohen's questions and address that the next time we're before you.
Okay, yeah, because normally, we've listened, heard all the experts together, so we've been able to form a cohesive picture. Now with the extended break, it's kind of made it more difficult to follow the plot line, if you will. So if I limit myself to purely the architectural at the moment, especially considering that this is in an early stage of design, I think that I don't have any further questions for the moment on this. And just to respond to somebody in the public, no, there are no restaurants here, and you did not hear them saying there was a storefront. This is just purely a warehouse. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gold?
Yeah, my only comment is, it appears to me that you're showing a lot more loading docks than you're going to need. I don't know what you're going to use the building for, but you've got a lot of loading docks there and they all cost money. That's it.
Noted, and potentially, Mr. Ford can address that too when he's up next.
Thank you. Mr. Toscano?
Yeah, just a couple of questions in regards to, you know, the size and scope and understanding, again, its preliminary conceptual design that we're looking at here. But the height of these buildings, the amount of square footage, the amount of material that's going to be stored inside, can you speak a little bit about fire suppression, safety, you know, what's going to be built into this from an architectural perspective? And what those systems might be and how that would be addressed? My concern around that question is really town services and based on a fire or something of that nature breaking out in a facility like this that has a lot of material, do the services, are they adequate enough to address it? Can they reach all the building based on what's currently available in the township? And what kind of help are they going to have on site that's going to be designed into these buildings? Especially since we have no idea who the tenants are.
Well, regardless of who the tenant is, the building is designed as a 2B construction class, which basically means that it is a non-combustible building. The exterior walls are concrete. Additionally, the building would be provided with, would be fully sprinkled to protect the structure and the contents. If you take a look at the facades, you'll see that in between the dock doors, there are basically personnel doors, approximately every hundred feet or so. Those are not just for egress, but they also are provided per the International Fire Code for a high piled storage building for ingress with the fire department, so that they can locally attack any fire without having to go hundreds of feet in the building.
Are there going to be any internal separations from one area to another, just as firewall, so to speak, to break up areas? Again, you could have one tenant that might want the whole space or multiples. But is there any planning around that, just something that can contain spaces versus having the whole facility being available? I understand the fire protection based on the construction material of the outside. But, you know, as you said, there's going to be a lot of stacks with a lot of things piled inside, which can create a pretty hazardous condition.
And those stacks of materials actually have to be separated from each other physically by certain distances, by certain aisle widths. And they're limited in area and volume. And that would have to be taken a look at when you have actual tenants with specific storage needs. But if it was one tenant, there is no requirement for a fire separation in this type of building.
And then I guess a question just for our own professionals, has anybody looked at, you know, the town's capabilities in addressing emergencies in a facility of this size?
This is Dave Simmons again. One of the things that we asked the applicant to do was touch base with the Fire Prevention Bureau and get their input. I don't know if the board secretary has received a report from them yet or not, but firematically, how they would address it with the proposed sprinkler system and the flows and pressures available from the Sparta Water Utility. We've requested that information.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Really appreciate it. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
Yes, couple of questions. On the personnel doors, to be ADA compliant, they should be tubular handles. I don't know if it's noted in your specifications or not. Also, is this a cut and fill site? Are you exporting or importing soil or using what's available at that site?
I think that's really a civil engineering question, so I'm going to pass on that.
Mr. Collins, we can bring Mr. Diggan back to answer that question. It's a pretty straightforward answer.
Sure, that'd be a good idea.
Just so we can.
Right.
Well, yeah, Tony, right there, you heard the question?
Yes. It'd be a little bit of both. There may be some import, there'll be cuts in certain areas, certainly there'll be cuts in the south where we're doing the detention basin. So it'd be a little bit of both.
But what's your net? Is that net import or net export?
I believe we're a net import. Again, we're still in the preliminary stages, but it's looking like a net import at this point.
I'd like a confirmation on the total number of dock doors. I come up with 191, but you don't have to do your math right now, just in the next meeting. Just confirm that. As far as lighting goes, I'm concerned about the spillage of light both onto Route 15 and south. I've seen some huge warehouses in Pennsylvania where they have gooseneck lights that just light up an entire city just about, and I'd like to see some blinders put on the light so that the spillage of the light is deflected down and not into neighboring environments.
We'll do it. May just elaborate real quick. You'll note that the graphic is being shared, yeah, that shared truck court in the interior, they are building out lights or wall packs for most part, and so that acts as kind of a containment, if you will, from 15. Then on the east side, Building A, you have that canopy over the boxcar loading dock, and those will be shining directly down from a height of, I believe that height is probably three to four foot lower than the building height itself, so you definitely have some sort of glare screen built into that as well, maybe shining directly down.
Will they be recessed into the soffit? Or the canopy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they won't be visible for Route 15?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And the canopy, you did confirm there will be a canopy over the rail siding?
Correct.
And the maximum height of any one of those two buildings is what?
56 feet.
That's what it's allowed. What are you designed for?
We're actually showing 48 feet as the maximum height at this point.
Okay, and did you have anything to do with the oversized truck parking?
That's likely the civil engineer. Can you clarify?
Yes, if you would, there's 50 oversized truck parking spaces, maximum length is 55 feet. Some trailers are 53 feet, so does that include the tractor?
So the trailer parks in the west are 50 feet deep, so there is a tenant primarily for this of trailers? Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, you're just parking trailers, right? You're not attaching the tractor to it?
Correct.
Okay, so you can get away with 55 feet, because like I said, the maximum trailer, I think, allowed interstate is 53 feet, just for the trailer. And where would those 50 spaces be located?
Right here. If you can see the screen, I'm trying to
I got it.
Right here.
Okay. Your footings? Was that the location being an old Santa gravel pit? Is glacial detritus? Are your footings below 48 inches? Are your footings below 48 inches? Or 48 inches?
At, at this point, the, yeah, footings are not designed in detail. The structural engineering of this building is not complete and structurally they, they designed from the top down. And then basically footing is the last thing designed.
Really? And that's the first place you start?
That's true, but they have to bring all the loads down. That's the way, that's the way they work.
All right, interesting. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Chairman Raina?
Just real quick, I wanted to double check. Chris Quinn, did you have a question? I thought I saw your hand up.
I did, but Jerry covered it and the issue with the firewalls and safety suppression. I think we, you know, we have an idea that this is just the preliminary plan, so all of that is going to be covered later. I, I have a question with regard to security at the site, but, but should I wait till we do the operations for that, Chairman, or do you want me to ask it now?
I would, I would recommend we do that with Mr. Ford.
Okay, perfect. Then that's it. Thank you.
Wonderful. No, I think all, all of my direct questions have actually been addressed by previous board members. So I, I want to thank you for the architectural component of this. If we could move to Mr. Ford, that would be wonderful.
Sure, let me just, I'll clarify one thing. So there was a comment about the fire and police basically review of the application. So our intention would be that the fire in place, police would have an opportunity to review these plans, comment on them. And that that would be, you know, our receipt of their approval would be a condition of any preliminary approval. So we would have done that before we come back for final approval. So I just wanted to make sure that was known to the board.
Thank you.
Tom, are we gonna, are we gonna go to cross examination before we go to Mr. Ford or?
I think that's up to the chairman. Mr. Chairman, do you want to just get Mr. Ford in so that the cross can, of the two attorneys can be of both those witnesses? Or do you want to go to the attorney's questions first?
I think a, a lot of the questions I'm hearing are centered around, again, kind of use the operational component. So i- if it's okay, Tom, I think I'd like to move on to Mr. Ford. Because I think that might clear up some of the additional, some of the outstanding questions that we have, or at least some of the most immediate.
I agree, so.
And Mr. Collins, frankly, you know, I thi- I think given a time realistically, if we can get through Mr. Ford, we would come back with, with cross examination of both Mr. Saunders and Mr. Ford. I anticipate that that's, I think that's where we're going to get to, so.
That sounds very likely, Mr. Goins. Appreciate your foresight, so. Why don't, I think it's always good to take a five minute break around now. It's nine o'clock. Mr. Chairman, are you good with that? And do you?
I am. Yeah, I think that would be great. Let everybody stretch their legs for a few minutes.
May I, may I ask what time the board plans to go to, to this evening?
Our last witness, sorry, go ahead, Tom.
You go, you go ahead, Drew. You said, you said.
I was just gonna say, our, our last witness will be at 9:45 tonight, Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll return to the board. We're just adjourned, we'll still be on Zoom, so to speak, but we'll be not coming back into the board meeting until nine o'clock. It's now 8:45, 8:54, 8:54 Verizon time, so let's, let's aim for nine PM, everybody, and see you then.
Okay, well, hopefully everybody got an opportunity to stretch a little bit. Maybe walk around, get a cup of coffee. So, yes.
This is John. I just, I've been monitoring the questions in the public. I think we need to make it clear to the public that they will all have their chance to talk. It might not be tonight.
Yep.
But because they think they're not going to get a chance and that they're going to vote on it.
Yeah, no, I, as we kind of covered this earlier in the meeting, for any of those that, that came on late. All questions will be addressed. This, you know, we, we will not be getting through this entire, you know, preliminary discussion through this evening, so this meeting will carry forward to other meetings. The intention is for us to have all of the witnesses present the facts of what they've, you know, what, what we've got developed here so far. Give an opportunity for, for those identified attorneys to address or cross examine any of those poor things on those sections. And then what we'll do is we will come back, we will address all questions as we continue to get through and get through the actual testimony. And then we will, of course, open it up to the public and look forward to everybody's comments and feedback. So everybody will have an opportunity to speak and weigh in on this. So thank you, John. So with that, Tom, do we want to call or?
Yes, I think Mr. Goins wants to call Mr. Ford, so we should have him be sworn. So, Mr. Ford, are you on your computer?
Yes, Mr. Collins, right here. Can you hear me?
Yes, can I see Mr. Ford? Let's see. You're on a separate screen, I guess.
Yeah, he's not, he's not here with us, so he's via Zoom, but he's on.
Okay, so Mr. Ford, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you swear in front of the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Ford, and please state your name, spell your last name, and give us at least a business address.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. James Ford, I go by Jim. My business address is 8841 Seventeenth Avenue. That's Circle Northwest, sorry for the long address. And it's in Bradenton, B-R-A-D-E-N-T-O-N, Florida, 34209.
Thank you, and please go ahead, gentlemen.
Sure, so Jim, we're, we're not going to have Mr. Ford testifying as an expert tonight. He is testifying as a member of the applicant's development team. So, Mr. Ford, why don't you explain to everybody what it is you do and your role here with the project?
Thank you, Steve. Citizens Esparta, the planning board, township staff and guests, thank you for giving me the time this evening. And I know a lot of the questions that I've heard so far are surrounded around the concern about operations. The type of tenant or type of use that the building is designed for and what, what our intentions are. And I am here to give you absolute clarity in being in charge of this development from, from start to finish. From, from, from our early on design that, that you're seeing now and that did its preliminary nature through the entire final application and final approval play phases. And that also includes building permit application. So as you know, a lot of these questions that have been asked so far about designing this stuff, it has to go through a rigorous building permit application and, and be finally approved by, by city staff. It's very typical of any of our projects. So this is preliminary and what I would call the true words of site plan. Preliminary application, it, that's what it is. This is to say that this site plan is, is, is what our intent is for the site, and that's what we are expecting to build with not only our capital partners, but also the intent used for the building. I think it's very important to take a moment, Mr. Chairman Josh, and, and explain who I am and in my past history. For 32, 30, 30 years now, 30 on the nose, I've been developing industrial real estate all over the country. I grew up in a transportation family. I grew up in a trucking and railroad family with fathers. My father's still with me, thank God, in his eighties. My grandfather, my uncles were all in the railroads. And when I got out of college in 1992, so 30 years ago, I kind of want to take a little bit different approach to, to, to what my family did. And, and it ended up that construction development was that. So for the past 30 years, I have worked for some of the largest, a well-known one in northern New Jersey, Centerpoint Properties. We were publicly traded company way back when, then sold in 2006 and I decided to move on, 2008, decided to move on to a different, different career, more on my own. Because in not only growing up in, in this industry with my family, but seeing the evolution and change in many different aspects of what your concerns are as citizens, it was important to me to try to affect the change. There has been an evolution in regulatory and driver concerns, so that's, that's hate, health and safety for people and employees that many people address, and I will be addressing more of it, and the environment as well. I can honestly testify and say that 90% of the projects that I've done over the past 30 years have been brownfield redevelopment or redevelopment of existing sites, knocked on buildings, whatever it may be, landfills, things that are bad for the environment, that it was my goal, period, as doing the right thing by, by any standards to clean it up and make it a higher and better use. Now, as you know, this would be considered a redevelopment site. It's not a brownfield. It's not contaminated. The water's clean. My partners have to regularly test with their existing operations of concrete and sand processing operation. So that's not what I'm saying, and please don't hear what I'm not saying. But the evolution is part that I felt like there, we, we do as a nation, and definitely in northern New Jersey, have an issue with trucking and the congestion and all these things that we deal with. So when I began this 30 years ago, this path, this journey of trying to affect change, it was surrounded around what is, what, what are ways and methodologies to get trucks and get, you know, get trucks off the road, number one, and deal with environmental concerns and pollution. And my answer back then, it continues to be that partnering with the railroads is a very viable, logical option for, 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 for distribution. Because what really, I'll get to it in a minute here, and clearly defined for you what the type uses are for these buildings. You know, my focus is on us as consumers and the fact that we need certain things to live. We need clothes, we need food, we need shelter, we need all these things, all right? And, 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 and it's very important to understand what, what the premise of these warehouse buildings are. Part of what I also want to state, because I've heard it earlier in the conversation, is that what this is not, this development is not unequivocally 100%. As Catherine said, it is not a freight terminal. It is not a high-speed transfer of major freight that is a truck terminal in nature. This is truly the definition in my mind, and, and it's okay if people disagree with me. I have no problem with that at all. But this is truly a warehouse distribution facility. And what it is intended for, and I am in charge of the leasing and what tenant will go in this building, number one, is part of my role, or I should say number one, but, but a major part of my role. It is intended for consumer good ultimate distribution. And those, those categories are things like food. Their raw food products, their finished food products, their beverage, and beverage in all sorts. Their paper, their packaging for, for consumable industry, their health and beauty, which we all use most days. Their pharma, you know, many things in, in, in those lines is what, what I view this project as, as, you know, from the startup, being what it wants to be. And the, 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 the way that this came about is that I was not around, and, and I, I developed in New Jersey. I develop all over the country, partly because it's why I said I have a Florida address. And I own 900 acres down here that is rail-served heavily. And it's very much so promoted by the community down here, but because it gets trucks off the road and, and allows for inbound freight to come in for its ultimate distribution in the consumer goods world. So that's, that's why, why here and not sitting with you presently. I am there quite a bit. My partner Frank is there all the time, so we are not developers that, you know, builds, builds something like this and disappear at the end of the day. So to get to, as I said, what it is and what it is not, and that's not a freight terminal, number one. Number two, they don't like their name use, but we all know are the biggest e-commerce company that many of us use in, in the world. All right, is, is a major part of what people consider supply chain or distribution, whatever it might be. We are unequivocally not marketing towards that e-commerce company for use of this property. Absolutely not. They are not rail dependent in the form of our design. And their need for parking and their need for massive amounts of auto traffic and truck traffic is not something that I care to bring to this community. It was never designed for that. That is not the intention. Make that very clear. This is what's known, what I would call is a dwell warehouse. In, in form of dwelling, where we live in a home, we are dwelling, okay? The dwell, a dwell warehouse, in, in its simple definition, all right, is, is for the ultimate distribution to local and regional consumption. Consumption, food, consumer goods, the things we need to survive every day. That's the intention here. Exactly. And also understand is that And also understand is that the sizes warehouses I know are a lot. But let's think about at the beginning, and, and, and there's nothing good, but what we've dealt with as a nation about COVID in general, or what we're experiencing right now on, on world affairs type, type, type issues. But there is a, a huge demand to be more centralized towards us and you as the consumers in Sussex County, in Sparta, to be able to get the necessities that you need, not only in time of emergency, but day-to-day in general. And what I mean by that is if y'all think back, I remember, you know, when, when we first started to experience COVID just over two years ago, and a lot of us started to panic and say, oh, my gosh, you know, I'm going to go to, I'm going to go to Costco, I'm going to go to, uh, to Target, I'm going to go wherever and get five cases of water. Well, what happened? The shelves were barren, because the supply chain was broken. It was broken. And ultimately, this type of distribution and warehousing that we're looking to build supports us in those times of need. So that's not the only functionality of it, but in reality, it is, it is a forward-thinking process that we're looking towards to, to ensure that we, when we need things, uh, and, and God, God willing, that something else of ma- major catastrophe doesn't happen again. But that's a capability that our, that our real estate development has here. Okay? As I said, I touched on some of, some of the major categories of type of products, and it's, it is, it's driven towards consumer foods. Um, you know, to supply what, you might ask? You mean, it is for shop, right? It is for tractor supply, it is for Walmart, it is for Acme, it is for Stop &amp; Shop, it is for Target, because they're all places that we locally may buy from. Um, in, in need of everything that we need, especially in, in food and, and beverage and stuff for our daily lives. I wanted to drive that home and make sure people understand that. This is not, you know, for, for things that are bad for the environment. Uh, this is not, you know, for, for some, you know, for, for, for activity or otherwise of heavy freight movement that's transferring, uh, because, uh, you know, because it, it's going to be dispersed to five states, whatever it might be, that is not the intention for this development whatsoever. We talked about, you know, trailer parking is an example from an operations perspective. Uh, I would promise you and tell you that most capital people that I deal with, who would look to, you know, co-invest in something like this, is just as much as the brokerage community and the logistics community would tell me that fifty additional trailer spots, right? And those ours, as some people had asked before, those are for drop trailer areas, not for tractors. The tractor would disconnect and go on its, go on its merry way to go pick up another load, whatever it might be. That is just overflow space in general of need, because there aren't enough drivers available, as I said, anymore, uh, you know, that, out in the streets to, to drive all the trucks that they want to. This is more of a, you know, a regional, you know, in, in local type play from, from an operation perspective. You know, so when we think about the operations of this project and, and, and the property in general, safety is absolute paramount. You have to understand that many of these warehouses are run for large corporations. You know, the Procter and Gamblers of the world, the Walmarts, I mean, the, 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 the major retailers, the food, you know, companies, the, the Coca-Colas, the Crafts, Nabiscos. They are run by outside entities, which we refer to as three PLs, it's thirty-party logistics provider. Those companies that fail really fast in this business are the ones who have, who have, who have bad safety records. So when you talk about the operations of these buildings, pardon me, and you talk about, you know, the, the, the flow of traffic and stuff, yes, it truly is, because we need that flexibility to lure the right, uh, opportunity here, which, by the way, the city and the board has full approval o- over them and, and, and their, and their tendency of, of the building. You know, not, not complete, you need, you know, understand something else that hasn't come up. We talked about having to go back to the, to the planning board in the future. Don't forget, any business that operates in the, in the township of Sparta needs a business license, okay? So we can't just randomly have someone move in and say, no business license, you know, you need to come in, fill out a questionnaire. This is for everybody in town to understand, you need to come in and fill out a questionnaire. Do you use any flammables? Do you any, do you use any aerosols? You know, all these type of questions are very important operations. And, and those are all things that are vetted here in the future. This is just to say that this is what the footprint of the site plan looks like, and that's the point we're at today. As you also heard from our consultants so far to date, the architect and the civil, is that there are a lot of unknowns in, in design. Those are all things that need to be vetted ultimately through, through the, through the building, uh, uh, the building permit process and, 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 uh, you know, work through, uh, in general. So getting back to where, where my vision always was for these type of operations is the fact that I think it's not even known, and we're going to have our traffic engineer testify here in a little bit to, to, to be clear on this, right? But even our traffic study, as it sits right now, does not take into consideration what my thought is about the reason why we need direct rail services building to bring cases of water and to bring, you know, cases of food and these type of things. For every one rail car that Tony Deegan referred to as, as a civil engineer, for every one rail car, it takes four trucks off the street. And you can clearly read in our traffic study, which is coming up here in a bit, that that is not taken into consideration in our traffic council whatsoever. So in reality, if I'm doing my job for all of us and, and, and as a team and everybody involved in the community, that we want to use that rail, it's part of the order, it's part of the ordinance, it has to be used. That's why this design is accordingly. I would have loved to have done one big million square foot building, as somebody alluded to earlier. But in reality, we can't do it. It's too deep, it doesn't flow well, it is not a distribution building. Those wider buildings, those size are typically reserved for manufacturing. This is not a manufacturing facility. It's not, it's not going to be. So that's why we had to come up with a unique design, uh, to support this and shrink the buildings ultimately. And honestly, many brokers, many people would say that our trailer parking, our drop trailer parking is way low. You can go to other surrounding communities around here that have three, four, five hundred empty spots as part of their master plan. I never wanted that here. It's not the intention whatsoever. And, uh, one of the, one of the, uh, board members made a great point earlier that I, I want, I made a note about and I want to elaborate on. In our spec design and, and, and building of this building is that we are not immediately putting in a hundred ninety-one doors. It's not happening. There's a cost factor to it, number one. Number two, in my thirty-year experience, it won't be used, so I don't want them or pay for them, and the tenant doesn't need them. And, 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 you know, beyond that is that it just doesn't make sense. We, we make those provisions if it came along, but just as much we talk about what we have already approved as an example for, for wastewater discharge right now, it's maxed at a hundred people, that's fact. We need to take other steps and work with the township and work with the authorities along the way before we can even, even hit, hit other hurdles. So I also have seen there's been, you know, just, just some, some, some non-understanding of information, like of, of the traffic and stuff. I'll let the experts talk on that, but it's a lot lay, a lot less than, 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 than any of us may think. I'll give you a prime example. Um, uh, just two years ago, I built a six hundred thirty-three thousand square foot one building. Rail-served, the rail, uh, uh, comes to the side of, of the, of the, of the, of the site, it's not actually on the building. But this was an old rail yard, old defunct, uh, redevelopment site in, in, actually in the city of Chicago, which is a lot of sim- similar attributes to, to what, what's happening here. The two, the tenant in the building is the second or, or first largest manufacturer of aluminum cans in the world. They make cans for Coca-Cola, for Pepsi, for Mountain Dew. They make cans for White Claw, a lot of people are drinking this White Claw seltzer stuff nowadays. All the energy drinks, right, you know, Red Bull, I, I don't drink any of that, so I wouldn't know them all, but Monster, many of that stuff, right? This warehouse is filled with nothing but racks and, 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 you know, ground stacks, and, and it's thirty-six foot clear of, of aluminum cans. Though, those cans sit there, honestly, some of them for over a year. And that size warehouse, to give you an example, we talk about being honest and forthright. Yes, these are designed for certain things, this is di- designed for a hundred ninety-one doors in maximum capacity. It's designed, i- in the long term, we would design the buildings for maybe up to four hundred, four hundred employees. But honestly, as an operator of these buildings, of what I do, development, and have done this for thirty years, that six hundred thirty-three thousand square foot building, they have five employees inside, five. And even during the holidays, when, when the beverage, beverage industry is in maximum need of aluminum cans, as an example, okay, Coca-Cola plant, the bottling plant calls down the street and needs cans. It, it's probably before the Fourth of July is an example, because consumption time of pop, when, when we're having fun with our families or Memorial Day, whatever it might be, so the month out before, they're calling for cans. At the maximum, the maximum, they're seeing forty trucks a day in and out of the facility. That's twenty in and twenty out. So I, I, I want to be crystal clear, all right? Yes, there are design standards that we need to design for in a speculative basis like we have to do in this, in this, and I'll get to that in a second, but it doesn't mean we're doing all that. It really doesn't. And, and as I said, I was getting back to earlier, is that I was saying about like a three PL operating a building like this? Safety is paramount. So as trailers are sitting empty on, on the, you know, the outside perimeter of the property there, the trailers that are up to, back to the doors, just like this rendering depicts, you're never going to see a hundred ninety trucks at, at, you know, full truckloads or empty truckloads are being loaded at each door. There's many reasons why. Number one, just like a port facility, or just like an intermodal terminal rail facility, every truck that comes in and out of here needs an appointment. They don't just show up randomly and say, I'm here, unload my load. It doesn't work that way, because the three PL in the building was unloading the goods for Kimberly-Clark, for, for, for craft, whatever it might be, they want to minimize, you know, th- their cost of doing that. It takes on average three to four hours to unload a trailer, and it takes the same amount of time to reload a trailer. Do you want a truck driver sitting there for eight hours while he's waiting for a load? That is complete inefficiency. You want them back out, out of the building, moved on to, to, to their next destination. So a lot of these things that scare us, and I get it, and I'm in support of everybody and understanding of it, a lot of things, these things that scare us are, are really misnomers in my mind. And all I want to do is clarify it to tell you, I'm here to, to, to answer these questions and, and ultimately tell you, everybody on this call, is that this is just early on, this is just the beginning. This is just a pretty picture to say this is, this is where we're at. We still have a lot of hurdles to climb here from an development standpoint and approval standpoint, and we're not asking for, for something that's just approving this and, and, and moving on from here. Uh, and as I said, many of the design factors, like trailer parking, is a lot less than the market demands, but we're okay with that, because this makes sense. We have something valuable here that's taking four, four trucks off the road into one rail car that you can't find in northern New Jersey. There's a couple other areas in northern New Jersey, really, that you may consider rail areas. Edison's a good example. Edison down, down south of the port, you know, uh, uh, at the beginning of Turnpike off there, there's a, a rail park there. That rail park is, is leased all the time, and it's leased to these type of, of customers that I refer to. It's leased to Home Depot for lumber or drywall distribution. It's leased to Target for, you know, for, for, for whatever, for clothes, that kind of stuff. Th- those are the type of users that we're going after. I, I am not in, in the business of, of, of dirty operations. That is not what institutional capital wants to see, and it's not what, what, what our tenant is here. I have always been a, a big fan, and I, I would consider myself an environmentalist. I've always been a big fan of what, you know, an environmental, environmental responsibility by efficiency is critical and key. Because every time you touch something, it costs money. So if I have a forklift operator that's pulling something out, and he goes and puts it in a spot on a rack or on the floor, whatever it might be, and that's how these buildings operate, that for him, they have to go back and move it, whatever it might be, it costs money. So there is a very, very tight operation and schedules on when trucks come and go, and they don't all come at once, they don't remotely come at once. So even at a hundred ninety-some doors, there's no way to physically unload or load, you know, mo- more than, than, than a dozen or handful at a time of trailers, because there's not that many people in, in these buildings, there's not that available equipment, there's not that avail- that amount of available drivers on the street to make this happen. So there is a lot of, you know, thought behind this from an operations standpoint, and that's, that's what I've been working on for, you know, for thirty years. Um, but we do need the flexibility, and here's why. Because ultimately, a lot of these companies that I've named, and I probably shouldn't have, they probably strike me down. There's other food companies that I cannot, because I'm under an NDA, we've already had discussions uh, with them about potential operations here. But it is, it is all been food and consumer good related type, type uses. The lead time, as we mentioned earlier, um, uh, Richard Architect said, twelve months. You know, we're probably right now closer to fifteen or sixteen months, probably more along those lines, mainly because unfortunately, the supply chain's messed up. We can't get steel, we can't get roofing materials, we can't get, uh, uh, the, the corrugated metal deck and the roof joists that support the building. Now, concrete is about to go up, up in expense. Frank, my partner's probably happy to hear that, I'm kidding, but, but, but in reality is that, uh, you know, the, the, just the demand, um, for our industry, from, from what comes all these goods that, that could very well be in these warehouses, it's difficult. You probably also know, uh, a lot of you do, and, and for those who don't know, our cost of materials for these type of buildings and across the industry have gone well up thirty, forty percent across the board, uh, for many things in the past eighteen to twenty-four months. That makes it difficult, you know, to, to make the numbers work and, 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 uh, uh, and, 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 you know, really, really show that it's for real. So why do we have to go with these, with the minimal spec and then get to what the tenant and, and, and the amount of money and opportunity they may put in the building? Why do we have to do it? Because nobody will commit to corporate America, the distribution, the things that we need to live every day. Those companies are not committing to it unless they actually see that the building is going up. Uh, i- i- you know, and happening in general. Then they will come and say, hey, I want to come meet the, the mayor, I want to come meet the folks in Sparta. I want to, you know, see what's going on, I want to talk about operations, we want to talk about specifics of what we do. You know, something that was mentioned earlier, and I appreciate, uh, one of the council people that, that, that mentioned earlier, we are a big believer, and I know, I know Anthony, my architect, because, because he did the wise thing, he wanted me to answer, and I appreciate that. We are big believers in the environments. There is a whole thing that, that, that some of you may be aware of, some might not be, that we call LEED certified. LEED stands for Leadership in Energy and, and Environmental Design. It has been a standard that is worldwide now. It is, it is, is shared by the U.S. Buildings Council, and I've been a big believer in it from the minute it started. We are building everything in this building, including asking the questions about, about the outside lighting and stuff. It's all LED, it is state-of-the-art. Those wall packs, actually, we, we will do a photometric study to bring into city staff. Beforehand, I require of my, my, my people as a developer, we will bring in a photometric study that will actually pictorially show you the brightness of the building at night, uh, even for safety reasons, when it is or is, is not operating. Um, you know, there's a lot of things that, that, that devil in detail there that, that, that haven't been, uh, you know, addressed and expressed, and I appreciate that, you know, in, in, in being able to answer these questions. So if, if, if I really could, honestly, from a business standpoint, my standpoint of a developer in making a hundred fifty million, million-dollar potential investment here, I would love to say that I have a tenant committed to you right now. But it, it, and we call it a build-as-super-lease. It's not in the world that we, unfortunately, live in right now. I need to show that we've got a warming community that's controlling this process, that's welcoming, you know, th- this opportunity. And that is here to help, you know, us live good lives and not when, when, when the next, uh, uh, you know, situation happens. I mean, where I live, I, I, I live in Florida because I have a big development down here, but I'm up there quite a bit. I stay there, you know, quite a bit. I'm in, um, in, in other parts of the country and traveling. I mean, I see it all the time. Uh, down here, our, our big chain, uh, store is called Publix. Uh, every other day, something's out on the shelves. Gatorade, you know, I use it when I work out in the morning, water, you know, certain, uh, certain perishable foods, whatever it might be. It always seemed like there was always a shortage, and that's because this imbalance of supply chain. So to know that we have this type of development that services the local community in the consumer goods world, to know that it's a benefit to us in making our lives better, that was always my intention. It was never to say to anybody that, you know, and, and we'll get clarity when we get to the traffic, because I want the experts to testify and be clear on things, that, that, the traffic and the environmental are coming up, and I want them to speak and, and, and tell you about the reports and be honest, because that's important to me. But that was never the intention, and it really wasn't, to say that, you know, th- this is, uh, this is bad. I, 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 hopefully, my perspective is a little bit different than most, is to say that this is positive for the community. So that's, uh, you know, kind of my, my thoughts, uh, this evening, uh, Chairman and Steve. And, and, uh, yes, I'm absolutely open to, to questions at this time, if appropriate.
Yeah, Chairman, I think we, we've covered a lot of, we've covered a lot of topics there. I, I think, um, you know, there, there are a number of questions that I wrote down that we had deferred to Mr. Ford, but given that, um, you know, I think we've only got a limited time left, maybe we'll, we'll just open it to the board's professionals and, uh, the board. And then if I think we missed anything, I'll just hit those at the end.
Yeah, that will be, that, that's acceptable. So, Mr. uh, Mr. Simmons?
Before, Mr. Chairman, before you start, can you please remove the picture? Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. So Mr. Ford, um, thank you for y- your commentary on this. Uh, what I'd like to do is turn it out over to, I guess, first, Mr. Simmons and, uh, to Catherine. To see if there are any specific questions related to, you know, as we talk about the business operations and. Mr. Ford, I appreciate your vision and sort of what's kind of brought you to, to this level and, uh, but. I guess let's start with Mr. Simmons and, and Mrs. Sarmad, uh, with regards to any specific questions they've got or. Just from an operational question, because I, I think this is really the meat of, I think, the discussion that we're looking forward to having. Um, honestly, I don't think we're going to get through this in the next thirty minutes, so I suspect we may need to carry this forward. Uh, well, we'll certainly be carrying the meeting forward, but e- even this portion of it, as we look at the operations and everything. Uh, because I do think that will be the meat of this conversation. But let me start first with, uh, Mr. Simmons and, and Mrs. Sarmad to see if they have any specific questions they'd like to address first.
Or Mr. Chairman, this is Dave Simmons again. Uh, Mr. Ford, the one question that, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you speak to, but maybe you could address. I know it was brought up before. In your overall vision for this particular project. Would you envision this site being developed in one phase or would you phase it in?
Mr. Simmons, I mean, the, the, the thought would be to, to do in one phase, okay? Because I firmly believe there would be one tenant and this almost I want to address. You know, the, the, so our, our civil engineer was, was they asked her a question about, about, you know, how many tenants could this be theoretically? I mean, no. We as the, the owner landlord, okay, we want one tenant. We'd like one tenant. So that means, uh, Mr. Simmons, that the entire development, right? But if it happened to be a phased development, I believe that building A would come before building B. Uh, th- th- there is not an issue on, on, on any comfort level of, of developing the whole thing in one phase. But if it happened that way, it would be starting, you know, from, from building A to building, building B. Uh, and, and, and secondly is that, yes, the building is, the, 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 the two buildings are designed each for two tenants potentially. That's why we have two off, office pods theoretically in each building, but that would be the maximum. W- we do not want as the owner, nor does institutional, you know, uh, partners want more than that. They're not designed for that. This would not be, you know, beyond that. It's a single tenant, either both, you know, both buildings, one big tenant. Or intentionally would, would, would be the, you know, a lesser case scenario would be a tenant in each building. That would also have to interact because that, because of the rail, because of many attributes of the site that have to interact, um, from a logistics standpoint.
Okay. And the follow-up to that is, where would you say your limits are from, for a project like this? From a regional standpoint, how big a region would you sex, expect this to serve?
On an outbound basis?
Yes.
I, Dave, it's, it, it is a unknown question. It is an unknown answer, um, but what could it, what could I see? I mean, there's many, many tenants, ma- many producers, many, um, uh, shippers, whatever, that may be in closer to Newark. Um, a prime example is, uh, is, uh, um, the Mark Anthony Brands who makes that White Claw, the seltzer that a lot of the kids and stuff are drinking nowadays. And people enjoy it, but they're in, they're in a, in a processing plant. They make their product in Hillside, right by the airport. Okay, they have, they had no choice for distribution. They, they had to take a five hundred thousand square foot warehouse in Phillipsburg. Okay, and then there's a big development on Phillipsburg that was a former, what was it? The, uh, um, it was a former, uh, uh. Plant Ingersoll Rand or something like that was a former plant. They tore it down, redeveloped it because it was an old, uh, an old shutter manufacturing plant. They went out there. So, uh, to me, to, to answer your question, Dave, I mean, sure, could, could there be some distribution over to Pennsylvania? Yes. Could there be some distribution over to New York? Yes. But also, you understand, we're, we're, we're in a location here in Sussex County, Sparta, that definitely touches on distribution to. Uh, the city across the bridges. It's close enough in, you know, um, could go down the turnpike potentially. Um, and literally, if, 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 uh, um, you know, different routing and stuff, it, it, it could, it, as you know, could, could hit Pennsylvania parts of it. Uh, but there's plenty new to the distribution stuff being built over there, a lot of it. Um, so I would, I would really see this, you know, this is kind of confined by, by some of the retailers. Uh, in, in companies that I mentioned earlier who need close in distribution just to serve. Local consumers in the marketplace there in the county.
That's all the questions I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dave. Catherine, anything from your side?
And just, excuse me, just a few questions. Um. The, um, now that you've touched upon it about the tenancy and I understand, um, you know, this is still speculative. As far as who the tenants will be, but, um, I think. We haven't gotten to the testimony about traffic yet, um, specifically, but it obviously has been on the forefront of everyone's minds, um, just looking at the comments. And, um, hearing from the board, um, the more tenants in the building. I think the more, uh, potential there is for traffic and truck issues. Um, do you think that there would any, be any? Um, and you as the, um, owner or developer, would there be any, uh, opposition toward to a? Um, if this board did look favorably upon the application on conditioning that you'd limit the tenants to, um. To a maximum of two tenants, or is that not a viable for, from a real, real estate perspective?
I, I, Catherine, it's in being, yeah, realistic, it, it's not viable. Just, just to say, I, you know, it, it's not viable. But, but I can promise you, if you look at design, are you a designer planner, right? If you look at the design, you've got two buildings. There's four office pods conceptually shown, right? That, that really would be the max, okay, you know, that, that we would consider. So the absolute max for both buildings would be four tenants.
Okay, so that, that, okay, that's, I mean, that's good to know because, um, as I mentioned before.
I, I've, I've learned, I, you, some of us has done this a long time and, and you're one of them and, and are to me considered expert is that. I've learned when you cut it up and slice it up too much, it, it makes it difficult then to, to release the, the last parts of the building. And, and, and honestly, the, the, the demand in Northern Jersey for these type of developments. To serve us as consumers for our daily needs is overwhelming.
Yes, I understand that as well.
Overwhelming.
And, and space, um, you know, it's a luxury, the ability to expand is a luxury. So my only question. My question was more pertaining towards carving up the building because, you know, as I mentioned, representing the city of Elizabeth, um. Space in warehouses can get carved up, especially when it's, when it isn't limited. Um, and that's where things can get a little tricky as far as, you know, the logistics and the site working and operating efficiently.
Well, yeah.
And you, and you, as you've mentioned, there's a demand, there's a demand for space, and so, um, I think it's good that you noted the office space will, will. Um, generally naturally limit the number of tenants. Um, my other question, um, was related to, um, you'd mentioned something about. Uh, the, one of the, the, the buildings, you know, both being rail dependent, um. So building A is close to the rail spur, building B is further from it. Um, is there a chance that building B, you know, would be entirely dependent on just truck traffic and wouldn't utilize the rail spur? Um, because it isn't adjacent to it and it doesn't necessarily, you know, um, doesn't necessarily need that, you know. A, a building could be completely truck dependent.
I would say the safer thought process there of, of, of having this as an unknown of who the tenants or tenants could be. Is that we could very well see that, uh, as an example, one third-party logistics firm. Who would manage the entire campus for different products? So if you understand that space in that business, there's a lot of three PLs that are out there, very big companies, very good names, very, you know. I mean, it, you know, the, the Schneider, J.B. Hunts of the world might be in the truck business as well. XPO is another, a big one in the Northeast that runs these type of operations, right? They may have multiple companies they service. So I, 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 I don't mind doing it because I want, I want everybody on the phone to be able to visualize this and understand it. So say that, you know, you had XPO as a tenant in this building, okay? And their customers are Coca-Cola, Kimberly Clark, who makes paper goods and many other things, you know, in general. Johnson and Johnson who makes certain things, whatever it might be that we, that we buy at the, you know, the, the, the shelves every day. They may have multiple accounts in this whole campus. But, but there's an interaction there. So I could very well see that, you know, it's one operator, the whole thing. And it's dependent as to work in one unit. And then operationally as well, from a safety factor, some of the things that I heard, even some of the attorneys expressed early on about safety, absolute paramount. So this to me has always been envisioned as, as, as one big campus, but it might service multiple customers under one operator. And that rail to me is, is dependent. I mean, if, if I could, if I could disclose to you. Which I can't under legal and the attorneys on the phone could tell you, I'm on multiple NDAs. And we normally get asked to sign them when someone comes along and says, boy, we're interested in your project and we'd like to, you know, maybe be a tenant. Well, we're not to that stage yet, but, you know, the food and, and, and opportunity and, 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 and companies out there in general. Um, are such that this rail is, is, is a major reason why I found, uh, Frank and his partners. Uh, to be able to talk about developing this property. Um, the two main class one railroads are the CSX Norfolk Southern, as many are aware. They're both investors in the NYSE and W, the short line that we have here. And that's actually through my other developments with both those railroads over thirty, you know, long, long period of time. How I found out about this and the demand to say that, yes, there is a huge oper- you know, need and opportunity for rail-served. Uh, dependent, uh, buildings like this to, to, to get to the market. I'll get, I'll give everybody a prime example. I live here in Bradenton, Florida. Tropicana, orange juice. We all, you know, hopefully a lot of people drink it, some don't. The biggest Tropicana plant is right down the street from, I should say, miles from where I live. Almost every other day, we call it the Tropicana train. It's loaded up with frozen concentrate, finished product. In containers, in, in box cars that are, that are temperature controlled and is railed all the way to, uh, Edison, to, to, to New Jersey. And it's, and it's unloaded there into warehouse, just like we're showing in our slight plan and, and development. And it, it is, uh, uh, it is distributed from there for, to service this market. That's, that, that's the type of tenant I want in this building.
Understood. Um, I want to stay away from hypotheticals, just so we don't, um, believe or anything. No, 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 just, uh, my own question, line of questioning, I wanted to avoid that. So I have, very briefly, if you could describe, um, I was just looking at the layout. Can you just describe how, uh, freight is offloaded from the, from the rail line? And how the, the, the freight actually makes its way into the building, um, from the train?
Sure, the, the, the box cars, uh, obviously are pulled up and staged against the outdoor dock area that, uh, Tony Deegan was referring to. Uh, under the canopy, of course, we're in New Jersey, so we've got weather conditions to take into consideration. So it is canopied closed. Um, for safety issues, for, for weather issues for many things. Um, a forklift, the doors would open. It typically a forklift, uh, uh, well, it, it's, it's a metal dock plate, we call it. It's, it's a plate that goes out to cover the gap between the concrete, uh, platform and the rail car. For safety issues, there's, there's P, you know, strip that goes on top of that, then a forklift would go into, to the car. Take out the first pallet or load, whatever it might be, paper, wha- whatever the product may be, and then it's, it's shifted around. It's going into the building and it's, and it's being either staged right within the building and what we call a speed bay area, which is more of a wider bay area. And then it ultimately is put into a spot to sit there and dwell for three months, six months, whatever it might be. Until it's ready to go out to its ultimate destination for, for, because it's for consumption.
So it's direct, the building side, um, trying to look at the direction. So the building side that the rail, the, um, the canopy is on. There is, there's openings on that side that the, the freight can be for clicked directly into the building on that side?
It's, it's an outdoor concrete pad area. It's dock high. So then.
I'm saying there's, there's building openings. There's openings to the building.
Yes, yeah, it's, it's like drive indoors. It's like driving door.
If, um, I didn't see an elevation for that side of the building, so if your architect or your professionals could provide. Um, an elevation for that side, it would, I think it would clarify that for me. I wasn't sure, um, how it made its way into the building. Um. And I had just one, one final question and it's mostly a point of clarification. You had mentioned, um. About the traffic study, and again, I don't want to get too far into traffic because you will have an expert testifying on that, but you'd mentioned that, that was. Um, the, the number of trips was a conservative estimate because a lot, uh, kind of your mission statement was really. To, um, utilize the rail line to remove truck, truck traffic and all of the, you know, potential consequences like pollution and, and, um. Congestion that come with that. And I don't want to mischaracterize your statement, but I, I believe you mentioned that was conservative because, you know, you do have the rail line. Um, i- is there any reason why, or is there any, any way to, um. To incorporate, you know, the, 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 um, kind of shift of, of potential trips to the, to the rail. Um, because I think, you know, you, you could get a mix of both, right? You could get, you could get the conservative estimate.
It, it's gonna be a mix of both. I, I, I think being realistic and, and, and straightforward on us, it's gonna be a mix of both. You know.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll just wait to hear from the traffic engineer. I just wanted to make sure we, we had that, had that clear. Okay.
Sure.
I'm, I'm, thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you, Catherine. So the, at this time, again, I, I know we're running short on time. This is clearly going to move into, um, our next session. So this will be carried forward. Um, I believe in Diana, keep me honest on this one. I believe it's April sixth.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, um, so Mr. Ford, I think, um, you know, we'll, we'll continue some of the question I'd like to turn over to the board members. To start asking some of their specific questions, uh, but just, you know, with the, with the understanding, there's. Uh, uh, again, we're not going to get through this in the next thirteen minutes. Um, so, you know, we'll, we'll ultimately end up carrying this forward, but, um, Dana, if you wouldn't mind, I guess, uh, just based on the role. If you could, uh, start, um, coming down and, uh, just turning to the board members for some questions.
Yes, um, Councilwoman Quinn.
Okay, so just a, a couple of clarifying questions here. So first and foremost, um. How many trucks come in and out of the existing site today? So the existing manufacturing that's going on there right now, or, um, the businesses that are there now. How many trucks come in and out of there each day?
Frank.
As a comparison figure.
Do, if you, if you have that answer, you can answer. Otherwise, um, I think we may, we may want to come back with that answer the next time because I, I think. I think we're working on getting a real answer to that question.
Okay, I, I just would like to get a comparison of what we have today and what we're looking at. Because I, you know, I, I would like that clarification if you could. Um, also, are, um, I don't, there are obviously no plans on this site, but I want to clarify and make clear. You are not putting in any kind of application whatsoever that includes any fuel stations. Or any fuel to be stored onsite for any of these trucks, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to verify. Um, also with regard to security. Um, there's two questions in here intertwined. So first and foremost, is this site going to be operational twenty-four seven? With things coming in and out all day and night long, or are there straight hours of operation? I, I'm just trying to get a handle on that.
That is unknown. I, in, in, in anywhere here in the country, it could be one shift and, and I, someone said earlier, eight hour shifts. That's pretty accurate. Could be one shift or two shifts. It's typ- typically one or, or one to two shifts, not, not twenty-four hour operation.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Um, also, it sounds like everything that's coming up here, it would be counterintuitive or counterproductive. For a train to come from Edison up to here to bring shipment and shipping back to Edison. So I just want to clarify also that the goods and services, as you testified before, are really coming for here. And probably most likely north of here. They're not going back down to the places, obviously, where they're coming from. Because there's already storage facilities enough in Elizabeth, in Edison, down there. So these things, they're coming up on rail. And then the intent is to keep them going north from here. Is that correct? Did I understand that?
That's somewhat correct. I mean, i- i- and, and the reason why I say that it's qualified is that very specifically is that. We, we very much so may have a, uh, a, a user. Consumer goods user for the building that presently is not heavily or, or, or using rail in, in Northern New Jersey. So Edison was just an example, is all it was using was an example of, of, of rail, you know, opportunity, okay? There's no direct connector interface with Edison in that marketplace up here. Yeah.
And, and let me clarify, so I'm, I apologize. I, I didn't mean to come that way. What I was simply saying was. There are these warehouses and access to rail are much more prevalent as you go east from here. The point of it coming up here and being housed here is obviously not to ship it back there. So I just want to clarify, it's coming up here and then it's going north from here. Like it, it's going to Pennsylvania, like you said, possibly New York State. Here. here, um, to our colleagues that are further out in Sussex County. So that's the the intention. Obviously, logistically, it makes no sense to ship it here from east and then truck it back there. So that's what you're seeing as the majority of the of the logistics or the flow, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And with regard to to truck drivers, I appreciate the clarification. And this is why I want to kind of get a handle of how many trucks are in and out of there today, right now? Because that's going to directly affect or our perception of what's going on with traffic moving forward, right? So we need to know what we have today because a lot of people don't even realize that this exists today. So we want to understand where we are today, where we're going. So my question is, these people will not be sleeping at this site in trucks, correct?
No, no.
Or anything of that nature with drivers. Okay. I want to clarify because this is a real issue.
I understand.
The other thing is, what's your security plan for this site? Now, I know it's conceptual. But is your intention or your experience with other sites that these things are fully, you know, do you have security in your other places that you've done? Is that the intention for here to have security onsite twenty four seven? To make okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That that's the intention. Every operator is different. But yes, depending on the the type of goods, I mentioned things like pharma. I didn't even talk about things like electronics or something like that. It they're absolutely standard for 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 security. So so some some tenant, you know.
Yeah, it needs to be said and clarified so that we can be assured. So that's why I feel good that I want to hear it from you. And my last thing is, can you just briefly explain, based on your experience in the past and doing this in different communities, the the benefit to the community? Um, so we have a lot of people that are, um, and and myself included, we need to understand sort of because this is new to us. You know, the the benefits, you touched on some of them, but obviously there are there are big benefits. And I I'd just like you to sort of go through for us, if you will, so that we can understand also the positives for our own community of being able to have this here.
But they said us is local, you know, in in this community or any community is local consumers, you know, it benefits you because this type of operation is going to allow, you know, to to not not have to go to the store and see things run out, whatever it might be, as an example, right? But then benefits I didn't talk about, you know, are 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 the potential for job creation. You know, I can't promise I, you know, I can't promise there's going to be over a hundred jobs, you know, I can't. And 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 in my thirty year, you know, uh, experience with this, I don't think the numbers are going to be that high. I really don't. But there is there's opportunity for job creation. Taxes, you know, what what is what is this land in 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 the form of, you know, what what is a project in the form of land as an operating company and not paying in taxes? You know, I believe that these these operations, you know, create a much, much higher tax base for for the community and the benefit of that in general. You know, those are a couple of the key ones, just from a benefit standpoint that we haven't even talked about.
And also, just finally, my last one is with regard to partnerships. So I understand that, of course, you cannot say to us, oh, we're going to have this many jobs and it's going to be only local people and, you know, we're only going to use local things. And I I understand that. I would never ask that. In your experience, are you open, for example, to working with local schools? Whether they be technical schools or our county college, for example, because they've got a lot of these platforms, refrigeration, for example, rail, whatever it may be. Um, so so, I mean, I I see that as a benefit, but I want to get your opinion on that. Are you open? Do you do that in other places as well?
Everywhere, always do. In fact, if if you really go through the list of our consultants have talked to date and those who haven't yet, th- there is local as we, you know, is 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 we can get. But yes, especially technical schools, this type of things for job creation, job training. I that is one of my best sales tools ever. When I'm looking, you know, to put it to a a good fortune, you know, fifty, fifty, hundred, whatever it might be, company in a building like this is to say, we have the resources locally. And and yes, that's I I use it down here, you know, with the the school called Polk State. So yes, I'm a big, big fan of that. And he uses many local trades, even the construction process we can subcontractors, those who work on the sites, all that. Absolutely, yes.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you so much, Mr. Ford.
Certainly.
Thank you, Chris. Diana, um, next next round, we've got about six minutes. And again, I just want to reiterate to the public and everybody that's in attendance. So we will be continuing to address questions as they come in. There's a combination of questions and statements that are out there right now. So we will certainly control those that are within our jurisdiction that we can address. Again, the intention is we want everybody's input and feedback on this. This is not something that's going to be done in isolation. As you've heard repeatedly, this is a very long process. This is the very start and the very tip of it. So, you know, I just want to make that clear as we go through this. We've got about four minutes left of our meeting. I don't know if perhaps, you know, we'd like to stop here or I I guess my recommendation, Mike, I see your hand up. Is there, again, understanding we've we've got about four minutes, we are going to carry this being forward over to our next April meeting? So looking forward to continuing the discussion, but go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, before we go in, I I have two comments and one or two quick questions. But I don't know if it's up to everybody here tonight. The public's been waiting for a long period of time and heard testimony that may be applicable to some of your questions. So I don't know if we want to expand that or we're going to move forward into the next one. But if that's open to consideration for everybody on the on the call, as well as yourself here, the public, they've been patiently waiting. Saying that, and you guys could consider and decide on that, saying that, just two quick statements. Mr. Ford, first of all, very impressive and and great presentation and you're obviously very experienced in 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 your profession as well. So I thank you for you laying out a lot of clarity to your vision and your experience of what you could bring to the community. I mean, but putting it all out there, it's all about ratables, jobs. You're going to deal with sustainability. This development is based on economic conditions as they are today versus what they can be tomorrow. And it has to be a sustainable development of that size. And then as well as the traffic, let's put that right out there as well. So I just want to really focus that issue because a lot of citizens, as well as others, are concerned, let alone the components of the development, short term versus long term. Secondly, just one question for you. In regards to your previous experience, have you considered doing community outreach and stakeholder process prior to just submitting applications and other in your past experiences approaching a community with a vision or a development and getting community buy in and or community support and municipal, county, local support to a project versus an application? I mean, how how have you managed or mitigated that issue in your past experience?
My typical experience has been that I'd like to take to create a brand new PUD, a brand new ordinance, whatever it might be. Absolutely, yes, because because it's not permitted. You know, in this case, um, you know, our our team was believing that, uh, you know, and 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 I'm happy, I'm I believe, I'm I'm happy to be here tonight and 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 inform the public. I really am. But but knowing that is conforming, knowing it was within, you know, the the zoning ordinance and and all the all the parameters of it. Normally, we wouldn't go out in in do community type outreach. But if it was something new, a complete new, a brand new, you know, plan unit development or 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 plan development, some some call it. Yeah, she would typically, you know, consider doing an outreach and and talking it through. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That answers the question. And then finally, when you, when you evaluated and decided upon a project, you obviously factored in your highest and best use. You mentioned dwell well warehousing as the the niche product that is the highest and best used as you see it today. Obviously, with inflation, economic conditions, uncertainty, all those factors, jobs, et cetera. It it really goes down to, you know, bringing this into a community today, is it sustainable tomorrow? And have you factored that into your pro forma and or your considerations or is it a a long term, is it a short term or long term investment from your perspective?
Long term.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, and finally, I'll table this, but I do want to set the stage for this. I I hear a lot about traffic, traffic, traffic. Traffic studies usually look at the final end use and the impact to the to the roads, et cetera. But in a project and order ma- magnitude of this type of project, I think we've got to look, consider site development, the pre-development, site development, the construction phases and those impacts during all those phases, whether you're running supplies, trucks, fill, exporting, fill, et cetera. The public needs to be aware, understanding during all those phases of that entire life cycle of the project, that traffic should maybe speak to that as we hear testimony moving forward. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mike.
I'm sitting next to Mike, if I might just jump ahead here. I think the crux of this whole matter is this is not a brownfield, but the cost to this community to develop a ratable versus the actual tax benefits from this ratable really need to be assessed. And I think Mike's mentioned that on, and I'll put my wagon to his. And it all is going to boil down to traffic. I don't have anything further to say.
Thank you, Jerry. Well, I I want to thank everybody from, you know, our the witnesses, the attorneys, the public, uh, for your patience and for your, you know, your participation in this. It is a a critical component of this. And, you know, I just want to stress and reemphasize that, you know, again, I know this is going to be a long, you know, a longer process for us to get through all this stuff. And, you know, our goal is, I've seen some of the questions with regards to future meetings, you know, again, voice of the community, which is a a really important piece of this. And, you know, our, we will continue this process into as long as we need to with regards to getting through the testimony and making sure that we address all of the public questions and concerns around this. Christine, I see your hand up real quick. Is there something you wanted to address?
Super quick, uh, yes, super quickly. I was just wondering. We have some questions that came in and I was wondering if the applicant would mind if the questions were passed to them so that we could maybe put together like a bulleted list of maybe answers for people so that they could get this information before the next meeting or at the next meeting. But at least we would have, um, that they would have the ability to answer these questions for the people that were on the phone tonight that asked them.
Yeah, so my mind, Christine.
So the answer to that is not at all. And that was, Chairman, I'll let you finish up first, but that was one of the things we were going to ask for. And I just had a couple of housekeeping items.
Yeah, that's now that that sounds great. And Christine, you read my mind because I know there are a number of questions out there. Again, we'll distinguish, we'll distinguish between questions versus statement or opinion stuff, uh, but we will make sure all of the questions get out there so that way the applicant and their team can take a look at those. With regards to some of the housekeeping items, I've got on the agenda, uh, on the agenda. One is, I would recommend we look at the a landscape plan as well as the lighting plan. I know those were two topics of discussion that we didn't really get an opportunity to dig too far into. Or I have not seen specific plans aside from the high level stuff. So, Mr. Gwynn, I would advise, maybe we are, I don't know if there's an expert or if there's maybe a a deeper plan that the developer, Mr. Ford, has developed. But but I would recommend if you do have that, if you could put that forward, I would appreciate it. Our next meeting, again, our our carryover meeting for for this conversation will be on April sixth. So that is the the current date that we're looking at right now. I've seen a lot of questions with regards to in person and and just for the record, so so there's clarity amongst the the community on this. So we have been virtual since since the pandemic. And I know there are some, some different, I would say departments or some different groups that are have been getting together on an in person basis. Obviously, our our first concern was the the health and well being of the members of this board. We are evaluating that as a board. That is a process that we have to go through as a board to determine it. There are some notifications and things that need to go out that help drive that with us going back to an in person session. So that is something that the board and I will be taking up and we will be discussing to put those plans in place. But I did want to address that housekeeping item while I saw some of those questions. And, Mr. Gwynn, is were there other, I I you know, you had a couple of areas that you wanted to address as well, just in closing here?
Yeah, just, uh, we're really quickly, Mr. Chairman. So I I was going to suggest, I know April sixth is the next meeting. If if the board wants to do it, um, we'd be happy to do a special meeting and just answer the public's questions on the witnesses that we presented tonight. But I know that's extra work for the board. So it's up to you all if you want to do it. We could do it between now and then.
If I may, one housekeeping issue on the ownership disclosure form. If the three owners listed, if they could give the percentage of ownership.
Yeah. I I caught that as well, Jerry. Thank you for raising that.
We can do that.
Just one, just one request with the special, with having a special meeting to address the public. I think it would help if we went over the traffic study and the traffic expert first and then let the public have a because a lot of questions are coming in about that. I spent three hours studying the traffic study. And that's one of the reasons I was a little annoyed earlier that when I realized I wasn't going to get to it. I have a stack of questions on it. But, you know,
There's
I have work in the morning, so.
Yeah, no, and I think as Mr. Sylvester said, you know, Mike had indicated this and alluded to it earlier. I mean, I certainly the traffic component behind this, the environmental component behind this, I know there are, there are a lot of important issues in front of us to be able to address this. And there's still, again, we have a lot of testimony to get through. So I I recognize that. I appreciate everybody's patience because this is not a quick process and there's a lot of material to get through. I appreciate the volunteers that are on this, uh, you know, that are on the board, uh, putting in four hours and and, you know, those in the community and as well as the applicant. So, you know, incredibly grateful for everybody's time and commitment to this. You know, just a a extremely important and and certainly a a very key area for us to look at and make sure that we've got a full understanding of what this project. There's full transparency across the board, um, and that, you know, that we're aligned on it. So I am absolutely grateful for everyone's time. Mike, did you have any other comments you want to share?
Chairman, just just really quickly, I I was wondering if we could prior, well, sometime in the next couple of days, if we could get a list of the questions like you were alluding to, I'm not sure how that works with Zoom.
Yeah, it's a it's a good question. And let me ask Mike Sylvester. I mean, there's, I I can see the questions here. I can take, we can take some screenshots of them, but Mike, I don't know. Is there an opportunity to download those, to download these?
I I've saved the questions that were submitted.
Okay.
We do have a copy of them. Before we disconnect, I will do a second save to make sure we didn't miss any.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir.
Uh, and then and then just lastly, Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering if, because we heard from Mr. Cohen and Mr. Dash tonight, if they could just confirm for us who they are representing in this. Because I don't think we got to that at the beginning.
Uh, Mr. Gwynn, I had mentioned earlier that I am representing myself as as a resident.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that.
It's okay.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, I will respond to that. I represent Georgiana and Michael Burns, who resigned, who owned and resigned at ninety fifth, uh, ninety five Demerst Road. And I do have a just a question about procedure in the term. The questions that are presented, would they be posted on the website so that the public can see the questions being asked? And if there are any written responses by the applicant, they would also be posted?
Tom, is there a precedent for that or a recommendation from a legal perspective?
Not really. So that would be fine if they if the applicant would like to answer them. They could send an answer and that could be posted with the questions. It all really has to be dealt with in the public hearing, though. So anybody that has a question, really, you have to be sworn and testify and ask questions in the public hearing if you have a continued dialogue or question. So, Mr. Chairman, without further notice, we should carry this without additional notices to April sixth at six P M. Again, by Zoom until we have decided whether we're going off remote.
Mr. Cohen, did that address your your question, sir?
That did. Thank you.
Great. Mike, any last, I see your hand up as well. Again, I want to make sure I can address them to the Great, Mike, any last, uh, I see your hand up as well, again, I wanna make sure I can address them to the extent that I can.
Uh, I think, I appreciate everybody's patience today, and Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
But before we do, it's carried, it will be carried without additional notices to April 6th, six PM, uh, remote meeting like tonight. Thank you, everybody.
I'll second that motion.
Great, thank you, everyone.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, and good night, have a wonderful rest of your week.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.